Okay, we're gonna get started. We don't know where Steve is, but we're gonna get going. So, we're gonna open the planning board meeting for July 29th, 2014. And just a reminder to folks that we are being recorded for cable TV. So, if you are speaking, you need to use a microphone. Identify yourself, please. So, with that, I think we'll get started. And the first order of business is MacArthur Ave. And there's been a request for continuance on that again?
Yep. We're preparing. We're in the process of preparing the drainage report. It's not quite done yet for PSC to review. So, we can still get the date for the next meeting.
So, we are beyond 7:40, 7:42. So, we can still -- it's just a preliminary anyway. But we can start with Winding Hollow?
We have to do a continuing set of dates.
Oh, we have to set the date for it? Okay.
Yeah.
So, let's look at the next meeting.
You're up to the...
What's the next date available?
Uh, August 12th, or we can go to the 29th?
So, August 12th is two weeks from tonight. The 29th is one...
The 26th, excuse me. That should be 26th.
One, two, three, four weeks from tonight.
26th, is that the last month?
It's the last week of August.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah, so it's a Tuesday of that last week.
Well, it works for me.
I'm available for both.
October, September.
It did...
August.
August.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Does that work for everyone? Do you want to do the...
I can't do the 26th, but...
The 12th then?
12th, okay.
Go to the 12th.
Okay.
I think the BOS, I had their schedule there of meeting on the 19th, Jeff.
Uh, the 4th and the 19th, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I had their scheduled. That's what I thought. So, I tried to...
What time is available, Betsy?
We can do 7:30?
So, do 7:30, yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for MacArthur Ave until August 12th at 7:30.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can move on to Winding Hollow.
Good evening. Mr. Turner, over here. Thank you. Hi, good evening. Rick Goodrow with United Consultants here this evening on behalf of Tom DePlacido, the developer and owner of this property, which is located on Holbrook Street.
Oh, excuse me, one quick second. This is a public hearing for an open space special permit. So, we do need to...
Read it in.
Uh, read the hearing notes into the public under, please. Sorry, Rick.
No problem. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 and 41, and the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws and the Planning Board rules and regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 29th, 2014, at 7:40 PM in Room 124 in Norfolk Town Hall on Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., on the application of DePlacido Development Corp. for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan entitled "Winding Hollow," plans by United Consultants, Inc., of rent to Mass. dated June 13, 2014, located off Holbrook Street. Subdivision is proposed to have nine lots. CSS is map 16, block 34, lot 162 in the R3 zoning district. There is also an application for special permit for approval of an open space preservation development. Plans, applications, and associated materials are at the Planning Board office and may be inspected during office hours.
Okay. Now, you see them.
Okay. As I was saying, the property is located on Holbrook Street, on the northerly side of Holbrook Street. Rockwood Road intersection with Holbrook Street is located approximately here. You can see a portion of Rockwood Road, just to give everybody a visual as to where the property is located, if you haven't had a chance to get out there. We had come before the board informally in April to discuss some of the concepts. We've now taken those concepts into this first plan set, which is a preliminary plan. So, what we have here is nine house lots. Nine houses shown in a purple color roadway sidewalk system to provide access to those lots. Lawn areas, approximate lawn areas shown in a lighter green, darker green depicting areas to be left in the wooded state. Primarily this area here, which is a relatively steep slope. Identified wetlands areas here in a blue color. The board would prefer we can look at the comment letters with respect to the two projects separately, or take a look at both proposals, I should say, and then go through the comment letters, whatever you would prefer.
Just a comment only thing. We had looked at a conservation, and that roadway, this concept plan should be built without any variances, special permits, or other condition. And when that cul-de-sac is in within 100 feet of a vernal pool, although it's not certified, you'd have to be removing that out of that buffer zone. So, basically, that concept plan doesn't work.
Because it's within the buffer zone to the...
You'd be required to retract that to get it out of the buffer zone. And then, you place a house on that. That house being that vernal pool, the house would have to have its foundation footprint outside of the 100-foot buffer zone.
Which it is. Which it is. Is that... See a little more clearly on this plan.
Well, the cul-de-sac as it is is in the buffer zone.
Correct. The cul-de-sac is within the buffer zone. But the house footprints are located outside of the buffer zone.
Okay.
That's my point.
Okay.
So, and we have filed a ANO-RAD application with the Conservation Commission. It was scheduled for the 18th of August to meet with the Conservation Commission to go over those items. We do have a letter or an email from the Conservation Commission with respect to the proposal. And they do refer to an order of conditions being necessary if work is proposed within the buffer zone.
But the concept plan isn't valid as it stands because it's not done in its own merits. That's my point.
Well, I think we'd need to propose it to the Conservation Commission and make our arguments accordingly.
But you'd have to hold up your whole open space permit until you did that.
Can you give me an idea of how close it is?
Yeah, it's in the 50 to 100 foot of the vernal pool. And in this town, we don't allow anything in 100 feet of the vernal pools. And if it's new construction, in a precedent setting, we have the roadway pulled out of that because they have the opportunity to. You're welcome to come and file and go through that, but I would say there's a strong likelihood you'll have to move that from the vernal pool.
We do have some alternative plans, so appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. So, what would be the preference of the board?
I'd love to see the other concept, if you don't mind, and then on to the comments from there.
The open space concept?
Yeah.
So, as I said, we come in and looked at an open space concept, which would basically shorten the roadway into a roadway one direction in and out. We had talked about degrading in this area here where there's the existing curve on Holbrook Street. And we've provided, you know, within the subdivision plans, a grading plan that depicted the roadway, roadway profile, roadway grading, and lot grading to accomplish the site distance improvements that we had discussed in this area here, not only for our roadway, but also for the existing Holbrook Street roadway. And as I said, we do have numerous comment letters that we have received and emails that we have received, and whatever the board's preference would be to go through these.
Well, that was the original plan you came in with, was it a concept you came in with? Is that not correct?
We come in with...
Something close to that?
Yeah. One very close to this, and then we actually had a second plan, which was the subdivision that had the roadway out of the buffer zone, but that would have us basically create three A and R lots, and then six lots within the roadway system. So, we could certainly go with that proposal, which would, again, be three A and R lots, and then six lots within the roadway, proposed roadway system, if that's the preference, as opposed to the open space. We could certainly do that. And then, we could propose a six-lot open space development around the three A and R lots. But there was questions at that time with respect to the frontage for Lot 1 and Lot 8 needing to be adequate on the proposed roadway, not the frontage on Holbrook Street. So, that's why we had made the change, and it brings them at 50 to 100-foot buffer zone.
So...
Even with this one, as I recall, there was question about whether the entrance there on the curve was far enough from the curve to be a safe entrance.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Right. And again, the objective was to, you know, grade that entrance to increase the site distance on Holbrook Street. We talked about potentially making this a one-way loop road for the open space and a one-way road in this area here, so there'd be no vehicles exiting at that point.
Yeah.
You know, all options that we still have available.
Yeah.
So, this one does not address the correct frontage off of the new roads, this plan?
Well, the way...
Didn't modify it.
The way the open space process works is we need to provide a lot yield plan, okay, which, once approved by the board, would dictate how many lots we could have in an open space. So, we started with this plan, and Mr. McLean pointed out that he felt that the frontage for Lot 8 and Lot 1 would need to be 200 feet along the proposed roadway to then be included in an open space plan. So, my point is if the nine-lot conventional subdivision with the buffer zone infringement here isn't sufficient to the board or the Conservation Commission, we could double back to create Lot 8, Lot 9, and Lot 1 as A and R lots, and then either go forward with this subdivision as a conventional subdivision, or some type of open space proposal around the three A and R lots. That would then be a six-lot open space subdivision.
So, the three A and R lots would then have their frontage on Holbrook?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, it isn't... You're putting it as an either-or situation, but have you looked at the possibility of twisting the end of the cul-de-sac in the conventional plan so that you avoid the problem?
In the... This conventional plan?
Yes.
Yeah, the issue becomes a lot depth and circle.
Oh, okay.
Or the lot depth circle, I should say.
Okay.
Trying to fit that in there with, you know, the setbacks, the width requirements and whatnot.
Okay.
If that are necessary, we needed to get the road to that point.
Okay, so you twisted it over for that lot?
We pushed it this way as much as we could to maintain that circle on that lot.
Could you lose a lot, obviously, and...
Well, that's an option, sure.
The open space plan, which one are you going with, Rick?
What we would prefer is this open space plan here. You have... You basically have nine lots, access off of a proposed one-way roadway system through, as they say.
And that site distance is horrific.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you've got how much fill coming out of that corner?
We haven't done the calculations of that, but significant.
About 20, 25-foot cut.
Yes.
Let me just read you some of the main purpose of open space subdivision. To protect important scenic cultural features, including steep slopes. And then, it goes down in another section just under that. Located in the least likely way to interrupt scenic vistas from the public roadway. So, basically here, you're blocking all the scenic vistas. And on one side, you're going down a slope. On the other side, you're going way up. And the main thing is, "The landscape shall be preserved in a natural state insofar as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal." So, if you're gonna take tens of thousands of cubic yards of material out there, which is 500 to 1,000 trucks or more tractor-trailers on a slope like that, you know, I'm all for the project, but I don't think this qualifies under open space.
Now, as we talked about previously, John, and I know you weren't here, we could basically take this layout and slide it down.
Yeah.
We were trying to provide some open space.
If you move that down, even with one roadway in, your cuts and fills are gonna... I mean, one of our jobs is to make sure you're not taking out any material that's not needed. We already have one nightmare of a soil removal situation someplace else in its 10th year. But you move that roadway over, you're protecting, number one, the scenic, the grades there, and the site plan becomes way better, the site distance. And the cuts and fills are sort of minimized out, so you've got very minimal material being moved off the lot. And you're getting that egress way away from that corner.
Correct.
So, that you don't have to deal with that public safety issue.
Right. But what we were trying to accomplish was the grading of this corner to improve the site distance that exists on Holbrook Street now. There's a site distance issue there.
Right.
So, that's what we had talked to the board about, was if we put the roadway in this location, made it one-way through, we can, yes, take down that hill and improve the site distance on the existing street.
I think I was the only one that liked that, so I don't think we should say the whole board felt that way.
Well, I think...
But when you talk open space, this doesn't qualify with any of the purposes for open space. And who gets the benefit of this open space is the butters. They end up getting bigger backyard. And removing of that much material in that area, that's a lot of trucks. So, I think this flies as a conventional subdivision plan. And as I said, if you were to move the roadway down and you minimize the cuts and fills, then the site distance becomes no problem then.
Well, which... Would you prefer to move forward with open space, whether it's this or some version of this?
Right.
That's... All right. So, why don't we go into comments on that particular layout and take into consideration John's as well?
I did prepare one more concept plan because I had heard through the comments from the town planner. We wanted to give you an idea of a straight-in cul-de-sac with nine lots, which, you know, would be not requiring nearly as much earthwork to provide a roadway system in, take out the site distance issues with respect to the proposed roadway. Obviously, no proposed grading would be at that location there where the existing site distance issue on Holbrook Street exists. But that's, you know, in essence, what that could look like, you know?
Do you have one that shows John's suggestion where you might have kept the open space concept with that curve, but moved it to the right?
I didn't. I didn't do the...
It wouldn't work, but the roads would be too close together.
No, we could, you know, basically, that distance, this would come around the corner.
Which roads, John? You referring to the one that's like, what is it, Pond View there, or whatever that...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I indulge the board? I wasn't here in April either. Your butters here, we've got a couple significant pieces of open land in this area, the Trout Club and the Game Club.
Upper Game Club.
Where are you in relation to that?
They are...
The butters?
This butter here to this point here. This is a lot in Christina Estates, and has access in off a driveway house sits back in this location.
And that's...
And those, it's Pond View. Those are all house lots.
So, you... In this concept, you're pushing up against the land that's already pretty well protected as opposed to adding to it?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. But shifting it would... Yeah, I mean, road configuration is gonna be a real major issue, so I don't know
if shifting it works for the trout club or not, but...
Well, I know with the last meeting, I shared my concerns as far as the corner and what could realistically be accomplished there in terms of grading, you know, to improve site distances. And I think, you know, some of the comments that John made, I think it just reinforces the fact that even if it were possible to improve the site distances, I think, you know, the whole idea of the cuts and fills to the magnitude that you'd be talking, I'm not sure that it really hangs together. So, I kind of go back to the conventional subdivision, providing site distance in both directions, I think, which appears to be reasonable in a conventional subdivision scenario. And of course, then the devil's in the details in terms of wetlands and other considerations.
This one works fine.
Yeah.
Looks like it's the same roadway. It's got no site distance problem, same number of lots.
That's basically an open space...
Is it a 700 or 800-foot cul-de-sac?
No, it's under the 500. This is an open space concept.
So, because, yeah, I think what I like about this is because there is such sensitive land around it, you know, it kind of achieves both, as you're saying. It's laid out very similar to conventional, but condenses the development so that it preserves more of the boundaries.
And that's what I was referring to, is that.
Yeah. This one?
It's still open space, but in a more conventional layout.
At the meeting in April, the impression I got was Michelle seemed to embrace the idea. Everyone else was kind of on the fence and wanted more details than just merely a sketch that was colored up. So, we went to the drawing board to do that, and here we are, so we can talk about it. But Tom had asked me to do this layout plan so everyone could see what that looked like. And, you know, of course, we could maybe put a curve in it, but rather quickly, we put this together so we could give the board an idea and hopefully get some dialogue as to what direction we should go with this, you know? They prefer this open space concept?
Did that pencil sketch?
No. No, that's just...
I know the architects always like to use the green maps because they don't show the topography and all that, but when you look at the slope line, you can see the difference with... And those cliffs there...
Oh, I thought you meant tissue paper. You mean a black and white?
Oh, no.
Okay.
John, if you look, you can see...
And you can see that it's all of the land there that's a lot more level where he's pushing this to it works.
Yeah. You can see the topography through here?
I can't, but most people could, probably.
Yeah. You know, it's relatively flat here. Well, it's because of the shading. If you get as close as I am, you can see, you know, the top of the steep slopes right in about this area here.
Less disturbance.
The reason why I was in favor of the concept of it was when the concept of a development here at all was presented to us, it was... The initial reaction from everybody was, "Oh, driving around that corner at Holbrook is awful. The sightlines are awful." And so, it was seen as if taking away some of that corner was actually gonna be an improvement for safety, public safety, and sightlines. So, it wasn't presented so much in the vein of how much cut and fill, and what's the natural preserve around there. It was really seen as a reaction to, "Oh, my God, that corner's terrible. Well, maybe this is an opportunity to sort of, you know, follow through with the development, yet at the same time, improve a condition that's really horrible." So, that was the reason why I was in favor of it at that time.
That's a double whammy, too, because not only is it a big terrain change, you're going right up a hill and down, so the winter presents even more problems. So, that's a real tough corner.
Right. But the thought was that this could potentially improve that.
No, I understand.
So... But I did see the topos. It wasn't just a big green blob that us architects like to see. So, I knew the topos were there.
No, thank you. I like to watch the pencil sketches. You can see, you can understand it better.
Well, of the ones that have been presented, that seems to be, to me, the most acceptable right there. It's the color one.
This one?
This, the color one up on the top.
That works good.
Yeah.
So, open space subdivision isn't off the table.
Right.
It's just that the curve was gonna be hard on a curvy street.
Yeah. Would the board prefer a scenario like this shifted further to the east, or a single-load cul-de-sac? That would...
I like the single.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
A lot of the things I'm looking for in open space is when you're trying to tie neighborhoods together, is to bring trails into other neighborhoods. And that's a... Holbrook is a street that's really hard to ever get a sidewalk on.
Yeah. See, this gives you an idea of the open space left. When you look at the outside of the barrier, the green space, you see all the individual houses, which they tend to make those open space parcels their backyard.
Yeah. So, I'm not really sure how... I'm not really sure how to connect this into Pond, into Pond View. There has to be a way.
I would think it'd be possible to extend a sidewalk from that cul-de-sac over to Pond View. I mean, I don't know for certain.
It's a better section. It's a better section of the road, but if... That may be the only way we can make the connection, because it's not gonna be up on... There's only one or two lots there in Christina. Those are house lots. Those aren't open space pieces?
House lot. That's a house lot. That one's... We don't really... It's a corner that we connect to, so we couldn't put a trail into it.
So, another...
Four lots have a common point. But this is a house lot.
That... So, the triangle piece is not a...
That I'm not...
...open space.
So, one concept might be to kind of shift these up a little and make a greenway, perhaps, that, you know, connects in from the different neighborhoods or something, some greenway that kind of cuts through, so you're not in someone's yard.
Yeah.
Why is that house setback so much, Rick?
You've been there before. You know this concept.
The second one up on the right.
To maintain the 50-foot setback from the houses, we just showed them staggered as opposed to all in a row.
Yep. Usually, the process is that we hear...
You can really see what's going on to this conversation.
Yep. You'll get... We'll give an opportunity to the public, so usually, we hear from the presenter.
It's relative exactly what you're speaking about.
Yep. Yep. But our processes, we hear from the presenter, and then we usually hear from our engineers and our board, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're all sitting down because I have one more comment, concept. Mr. DePlacido and I met with the DPW, and they asked us, and Tom authorized us, to look at this site as a potential municipal well site. So, you can see here, well-sighted, where the 400-foot radius would encompass a good portion of the open space, and then carry over the lot line onto the Trout Club property. And we have shown nine open space lots that would be fronted on Holbrook Street, which we realize is a potential issue with the open space regulations, but we wanted to propose that. Bob is here.
What's the frontage drill note, Rick?
It varies, but it's, with the exception of Lot 1, which is 50 feet, they're all 100 feet or more. You know, I mean, these lots are wider than 100 feet. They average over 100 feet, which is the requirement. They're all over 20,000 square feet or over, some are larger, but...
The side setbacks are what, 20 feet?
15 feet in an open space. This would be an open space.
Right. So, they're 15-foot side backs.
15-foot side setback lines 50 feet between the buildings.
So, sitting on a high-yield acreage.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
How would you access the well, in what direction?
Um, we'd have to discuss that with them and maybe make a small adjustment to one of the lots to see how we...
An easement or something?
Either an easement or in an access road, you know?
Right. They'd need a real road, I think.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, again, this all happened relatively quickly. We wanted to put some concepts together based on comments we were getting. And I think we could certainly work out an access of adequate width for the board, for the DPW.
So, you've done studies up here?
I'm sorry, Michelle, there.
Yeah. Curious if they've studied it.
This came to us fairly recently, and we've been looking for places throughout the town to drill and find another well site, because we are in dire need of that. This area here, as far as what we can see from an aerial, is that it... It's in an area where there's kind of like three bodies of water around a gravel pit. Across the street where Mr. DePlacido has another site, he has an irrigation well that produces more water for his grass than we have for drinking water combined in the entire town. Up the street is Millis. Millis has a, from what I understand, an abundance of water. Millis has a, from what I understand, an abundance of water. So you can only guess where there's water underground, but all indications is that, bingo, this could be it. And we've looked, we've spent some times, we have a publication that we've circulated to tell you the situation that we're in. But right now, and that's one of the reasons why we didn't submit any comments, sometimes we like to hear from the DPW, we'd like to hear from the developer before we make comment, but wanted to see how the board would take to this concept right here. I think that we'd need help from zoning and the Trout, the Trout Club, which is the widened-out area that would have to make a purchase, so there's factors. But right now, this seems promising with some teamwork.
Is that be your Zone 1? Is that what the circle's indicating?
Circle is, it's a 400-foot radius. We try to, we have to have a 400-foot radius of complete ownership where nothing can happen. Easements won't do. It has to be ownership, and that's an 800-foot diameter in every direction. So we asked Rick to take this and fit that circle on there, so you're looking at a scale drawing, and that fits like a glove with some purchases.
One question is, if you looked at the last three or four houses on that corner there, how in the heck would you build them on that real slope? I mean, it doesn't seem possible to do that economically.
Certainly Tom can speak to that, but he did some creative work on slopes directly across the street from this property with some of the houses that he built there. I mean, obviously, you'd be looking at some grading, some retaining walls potentially to terrace that down as the road dropped. You know, it's approximately, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Approximately 10% grade in this area here on the existing roadway, so 100-foot lot, you're looking at approximately 10-foot elevation change. You can certainly terrace that with walls and some slope grading.
I mean, would it be possible to have access similar to the, what I refer to as the conventional, might be open space subdivision, to have that type of access, so you have good site distance in both directions? But when you enter, you can have a left-hand, you know, 90-degree, what have you, to service and access the, maybe four properties on that end of the development, and that could be used to also access your well if this concept came together, so that you could perhaps eliminate the site distance issue with the driveways for those homes that are closest to the corner.
So you're suggesting we put some type of roadway into the site?
And, I mean, if you were to point to the same location that you had for the cul-de-sac that you had presented earlier, let's say that one of the homes is eliminated as a result of that, but for the sake of argument, at least at this stage, and that was to serve as your access for the well, and you also had, you know, dog leg left, you know, to service the homes at the corner. Because you still have an issue with whether it's a road or driveways, you know, that are emptying out at that corner, in my opinion.
How do you get around with the open space plan, lots can't enter on an existing road?
Correct.
So basically, that's not an open space plan?
Correct.
So this is a conventional plan?
No. It would be an open space plan with either a waiver or zoning relief. You know, that's how it would have to be presented. You know, if it's something the board would be interested in, I'm sure Mr. McGee had quite some work to do with respect to the well site. We're just, again, putting things out here for discussionary purposes, so.
What is the, what is the, I get that this is the closest fit, and I also understand that it's, it would be, you know, not wise for us to discount it out of hand. What's that distance of, can, what are the size of these lots, and how close does the circle come to the street, up to the existing road?
The circle is right here.
Right, right, so how, what's that distance there? Is it just a couple hundred feet?
Probably 150 feet or so. Very close, very tight.
So the lots are what, three-quarters of an acre?
Twenty, they're around here, the 20,000 square feet or above, some over-
Half acre.
Yeah.
And what are they across the street, an acre?
55,000.
55,000.
It's the underlying zoning district.
It's tight.
I don't think that's-
I think for me, personally, if, you know, if there was objection to a road going in, I think driveways are worse on that corner. I would want to know for sure, and have the town do a little bit of investigative work on the engineering side to ensure that this is a good well site before, you know, ever approving a layout like this.
Unfortunately, it takes years. I mean, like, three or four.
So, so the idea is which, something had some, to consider it, something has to bend in what would be, what would be, you can't, the 400-feet radius is mandatory. So it might shift, but then you get into, you already have to get in, you already have problems over there, but how much could it shift? Street, so what do you, so which waiver, which waivers are the best waivers?
Well, can this be, could this be put off until you do preliminary tests to see what the short-term pump tests resulted?
The, a couple more things I should point out. I think that's probably a better question for Tom. We go in there, and in 90 days, I can tell you if there's water sufficient to go forward. What takes time is the permitting.
Yeah.
But you'll know, but you'll know if the water, you've done a longer-term test.
Right. So, you know, and a couple of other things, and it seems I'm pushing in the direction of this option here, only because I understand the need for water in this town, is that when you have a proposal like that versus a conventional road going in, maybe, and I'm saying maybe, Tom can give up a lot for a road to go in because he simply doesn't have to pay for infrastructure. So there's a cost savings of no road that would come with a cul-de-sac and so forth. Everything's already out on the street, and we just make improvements, whatever improvements we could make to Holbrook Street.
Or a shorter road. If you're just entering the property and accessing some of the units near the corner.
On the corner, yeah.
As opposed to-
Off the street, though.
But there'd be no road for the, for the houses. It's already there, it's Holbrook Street.
Well, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure that that hangs together at the corner.
Doesn't hang together.
I think, you know, in terms of driveways and, you know.
Right, well, right, exactly. So we gotta go out there and, like Michelle said, if you would even hold this thought, so we can go out there and really do some research, and get some professionals involved, we can see if this is doable. Certainly not gonna go after a well that would create an accident situation or, you know, and then we have residents here we haven't heard from yet either. I wanna see how they feel about it.
Well, the owner of the property is sitting to your right there. I mean, this is, he doesn't have to agree to this, so the question is, would you even consider this proposal?
The fact that it's up there, he's considering it.
Microphone, please.
Yes, just for the record, Thomas DePlacido Jr., DePlacido Development. And before us tonight, I mean, we've presented one, two, I think, three or four different concepts, four different concepts. Conventional subdivision, formal lots through some type of mechanism that yet to be determined if it's an open space type of permitting process with some variances, and some open space plans. Basically, I try to be a very good neighbor, so I'm looking for your suggestions here, which ways that you might wanna see this land developed, and if I can work with the town, you know, with some type of potential well site, if that works out, and we can, we can do something like that, so be it. I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay.
As far as going forward with, you know, if DPW needs 90 days or so to figure out what they need to do, you know, we've got conservation next month, and that'll take a little time and everything else, so, you know, if it's another 30 or 60 days after that, if it's a viable well site, those don't come easy, and I think just for the public interest and everything like that, it should be looked at. So I, I'm in favor of whatever the planning board would wanna do, and if it takes an extra couple months to figure that out, then, you know, so be it. Let's do what's right.
Thank you.
With that, if, if he was to take that time to do some, the preliminary investigation, you said Trout Club is inside the-
Yes.
The Trout Club, you're gonna have to talk with them anyways to see if this is viable, get initial feedback from them. I'm pretty sure that more of the required circle on their property would not cause any harm to what they're doing, and would probably be pretty complimentary.
Well, the test alone, the DEP, the DEP will watch this drawdown to see if we lose fractions on the surface. And if there's any, you know, any direct hit on any water surface, and that's what the Trout Club's all about, I would think, Trout, then the whole thing would be kiboshed.
That would be this, well, that would happen, that would happen if you, anywhere you punch into the aquifer.
Yeah.
Right, we look at the, we look at the effects on all the water bodies everywhere, Vernal Pool, I mean, not Vernal, but everywhere, and the testing alone would-
Would find that out.
Yep.
So they would wanna know that information before, before they had any, any opinion?
Well, not the Trout Club so much. The Trout Club, you know, we hope they would go along with this. I don't, I don't know until we talk to them what their decision would be.
My point, my point was that if we could push the circle farther-
Oh, I see, yeah.
-onto their property, because, you know, assuming you have no change in water levels on the surface waters. If you can push it into, more into their property, there would be, we'd have more flexibility on where the lots are laid out.
I see. Another big thing, too, is when you look for water, you're often faced with land purchase. This is a freebie. It's huge. This is, you know, this needs some consideration. I'm not so sure where 115 is. Can we slide that more without getting into the road?
115's right here.
Okay.
And the intersection with Holbrook Street comes in here, and then takes that bend.
Yep.
It's shown on one of the locust maps a little more clearly, but this is the curve at 115, and the intersection with Holbrook's about right here where my fingers are.
Yes, how much room do you think there is between the circle and, and the streets right now?
And Holbrook Street?
Well, you're getting, if we push, if we push onto Trout Club, we're gonna be pushing toward Holbrook, toward 115?
Yeah, I mean, the Holbrook Street layout's right here, so it's not a significant amount that this circle can move in this direction. Obviously, it's gotta pivot about this point.
Yeah, okay.
So you don't have a lot of-
You know, we got a controlling point here, the lot in Christina Estates, and the controlling right-of-way line here of Holbrook Street.
Not gonna get a lot, that much.
So you've, you've, you've got just 20 feet or so.
But maybe a little.
Anything will help here.
Maybe a little, maybe we go with the radius on the other side. I mean, we, we can look at it.
Yeah.
It just, you know, we wanted to show it to the board and get some feedback before we move forward and get some direction.
And I, I think what you were saying, Jeff, is if we have to build a road to get into the well site anyway, could that same road be utilized towards the layout of the development? Then it's either a shared or a cost of the town that takes away from the cost of Tom, which therefore means maybe if you lost a lot, but you get a free road, 'cause it's going into the well anyway, and it has access rights, you know, maybe it all-
One of the things that Bob said early on in the discussion was that everything has to be owned by the town, is that what you're saying? And that, within that 400-foot circle?
Right, the owner of the well.
Yep.
Okay.
But they can take it by eminent domain if-
True, but, but I'm just saying, I also heard you say that nothing could be built on it. When you said nothing, do you mean a road, too? I mean, you couldn't build a road there?
A road, too, it is, the access road would be, you know, to it would be fine, you know.
Including a little-
Somebody's backyard with a swimming pool, you can't have, you know.
Okay, but including a little spur to service driveways for those three or four lots on the corner?
I'm not quite sure what you mean. The only-
Well, we've talked around it three or four times, let's talk about it.
Yeah, thank you, Walt.
Let's just, if you looked at the other drawing here, this is about where that cul-de-sac came in.
Yep.
So let's say it came in to the well, boom, right road, bring it to the well.
With your radius, 'cause you've got houses in the back.
You take a left here, and you go up here, and you service these four lots. The driveways come in this way to that road as opposed to going out onto the street of Holbrook Street.
Okay, so now you're looking at it, you're taking another 22, you're taking another 50 feet away from us.
Well, if it could all work, you know, if we could shift the circle a little bit.
If we can shift the cir, oh, yeah, you know, maybe, I didn't even think of that, but maybe. I think you gotta-
Because accessing these driveways out of that street is really gonna be tough.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, what I was thinking is if we could push the road over, maybe we could bring the cul-de-sac in here where we're already at the deepest point, and concentrate the development in that area.
Should all-
Maybe, maybe with some type of road. I mean, you know, gotta look at it.
Yep, right.
We know the constraints, but, you know, I'm sure Tom doesn't wanna spend the money having us drawing all these scenarios if the board's-
There's a butters right behind the Fordham Circle, correct?
Correct.
So you can't move it back.
Yeah. We got a controlling point here, we used here and here.
So you gotta go that way.
Well, the key, the key is minimizing the driveways.
And addressing that corner.
And addressing the corner. Minimizing driveways on the corner.
Well, I think if we-
I think that is the worst area, yeah.
You know, if we could take these three lots and put them over here.
Right.
I think that's what everyone would be happy with.
Yeah.
And if that's the case-
Happen kind of might not be the right word, but.
Satisfied.
It might be worth looking at.
Okay.
Is that right? We have-
That's the direction we should go in next, how's that? Looking at that.
It's not my opinion, it's everybody's opinion.
Oh, I know, I-
We're getting a lot of nods over there.
I'm gonna open it up to the floor if everyone's okay with that. Anything else? Okay? All right, we're gonna open it up to the public for comments, so just, again, remember, please to state your name, and-
Michelle, before you do that, do you wanna ask Tom to-
I got a head nod, no, did you wanna?
I can speak after the, the public speaks, that'd be fine.
Herb Maury's, Pond View Road, number seven. We're all civilians here, so, you know, we're trying to catch up with what goes on with these developments. Just in general, as a question, does the group ever, the board, the contractor and the designer, all ever go to the site at one time, all together and look at it? It's kinda like, you know, after a crime scene, they all take the jury.
Yeah, we've had, we've had times when we've done site visits on certain developments. We have not, as a board, met on this site yet, but yes, we do have, we do that at times.
But I bet we've all driven that road now a few times since this project has come before, so we may not have done it collectively, but individually.
Yeah, just a curiosity. I guess the other thing is, Holbrook Street itself is kind of a nightmare street to drive, as you all know. I personally went out there, if you're coming down Pond View, and you make a right toward 115, probably 150 feet past Jerry Bloom's house there, there are two trees. I went out and measured. The, the one tree is eight feet from the double center line, and the other tree is 11 feet. So that, between the two trees, it's 19 feet. And I know I signed in 1972 the petition to not take trees down in Norfolk, but in 40 years, those trees have grown, and I, I don't, even though, you wouldn't be able to tell me whether it's an acceptable road with just 19 feet between two trees. It's something, no, in the development, that the trees would be taken down, you know, in one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at exactly where they are. We have measured the pavement width, it is approximately 19 feet.
Yeah.
That much, I know. I have driven that many times.
There are two standards for roads in town, something like, one's like 25 feet and one's 20 or something like that. What is the minimum for a road like Holbrook?
24 and 26 feet are the two typical roadway pavement widths in town for a new development.
Okay, so the Holbrooks would have to be re-engineered to some degree?
Well, typically, the existing roadway would, you know, be looked at to see if there were any issues with respect to its width, grades, like this, etc.
Would 19 feet cut it?
Really leave that up to the board when they, when they get, you know, get a chance to look at it, and DPW director, and us.
No. That, that road would be looked at from an engineering standpoint, to be ringed in, even if it's just feet. Even if the development didn't go in yet, and we get around to it someday, you know, before we pave it, we'd go right through that, go down, freeze it all in.
Also concerned about school bus stops and along those, that road. Obviously, that big curve at the bottom to the left there is monstrous, and I happen to see a copy of the plans, and one of your designs is a roadway coming out of there, but you would be taking one heck of a lot of material out of that corner to, to make it work. I mean, you know, we lived there for years, and, you know, it is a nightmare corner as it is, but it just, it'd be a big concern to us, and again, kids that move in there, how the, the width of the road, and you mentioned the sidewalk, Walter, you know, that, that safety would be a big concern in that road to us anyhow. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to ask questions or make comments about any of the layouts that you saw, so even if it's a previous one, please feel free to jump in.
Hi, I'm Margaret Mason. I live on Holbrook, and your subdivision would exit right into my home, basically. So I am concerned about the road width. I'm very concerned because the children are dropped off on Pond View right now, and they have to walk on Holbrook to get to the houses further down, and it's very dangerous. And we have a ton of bicyclists and runners and families who walk Holbrook regularly. So my concern is, since the subdivision's gone in down on Cleveland, our traffic has our traffic has increased significantly and we have a lot of speeders in that area. Is there any way we could look at with any of the designs, getting a sidewalk pit in on that side of the street just to increase the safety? And I know the driving is nuts because I'm almost driven off that corner on a regular basis. But the speeding and the increased traffic is just becoming problematic for the residents there. So for residents, we have to make a decision, if this goes in, do we, one, want to stay here and continue with the increased population and just kind of the lack of control over people's driving and the lack of safety? Or can we do something as a community to put some better safety measures into that road?
Yeah, you know, I think we can look at different options and potentially some sidewalks in various areas. Obviously, everyone knows the grade on that corner is substantial and it terminates right at the edge of pavement.
The, the school buses will not go down that road. They will not drive down Holbrook because it's too dangerous. So that is the end stop, is Pondview. So we don't, as residents, we don't really have many options and we can't demand much from our school bus. They may take the kids down in Holbrook, but I'm just looking for, what can we do as a community to make this a lot safer?
Well, again, you know, we have all these different options, but certainly, anything with a cul-de-sac, a school bus would be able to maneuver that.
Not if you live on Holbrook.
Well, I think a school bus would be able to maneuver Holbrook Street to a roadway, turn around, come back out.
They still have to walk Holbrook to get to their home if they live on Holbrook. So this is more homes in an area with, on a street that's not well laid out and it gives no easement for anybody to walk. And it's a very popular access road for people to walk and run. And even just to walk the dog, you're kind of gambling, do I jump in the woods or do I hold my spot on the street so I don't get hit? So any of the designs, I'm just asking that, we consider that?
Yeah, we can, we could look at sidewalks along section of Holbrook Street. And then, you know, your second issue seemed to be turning around a school bus, so I wanted to show you that potential.
They just turn around at Pondview. They just back up.
I think he's suggesting that it could be improvements in both ways.
I'm okay with that.
Right. If a school bus is able to come down here, make this corner and come to here, now you're dealing with four houses here, that the school bus could discharge the children for these four houses here as opposed to there. Secondary to that could be a potential sidewalk. So I think it would, you know, less than 500 or 600 feet of the kids having to walk down Holbrook Street without a sidewalk by just moving the potential bus stop. And then we could look, as I said, at the sidewalks from there.
But I guess, you know, an interesting point about that is the concept all along Holbrook Street does potentially open opportunities to improve Holbrook, Holbrook Street, since there will be development all along that, that edge, to make it wider, to make it safer, to put a sidewalk in, and that is actually a benefit of the non, very non-conventional plan for the well, with the well.
What is the right-of-way width of Holbrook?
33 feet.
33?
I mean, it varies, but generally 33.
My name is Rose O'Connor. I am the butter in the back, so it doesn't appear that any of these plans are gonna affect me negatively. However, I'm just wondering, do we have any idea of the size of the homes? And will the size of the homes vary depending on the plan that you use? The ones that, if you decided, for example, on the plan that requires 20,000 square feet of land, would that mean that you'd build a smaller style home? Do we have any idea of what size homes would be going in there?
These houses are between 40 feet deep, 68 feet to 80 feet long are the boxes we've shown in here. So within that footprint, obviously, it's gonna be driven by the potential buyers. You'd like to do four-bedroom houses. So, you know, that's a 3,200 square foot, 2,800 square foot, maybe the 3,200 square foot footprint, two levels. I mean, they're gonna be good-sized houses. It might be a little smaller, depending on the market, but that's what we've shown here.
Does that apply to on the well area?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
They're all 40 by 80s, you know, they're turned more. Tom has some creative layouts and some other developments with front-load garages, deeper houses. I'm sure he could expand on that a little bit to increase the size. Just very nice layouts and rent them.
Hi, my name's Scott Tomsek. I live on 3 Pondview Road. So I have a question on this plan that you have up right now. That, that one house that's set back from Holbrook Street quite a ways, is the driveway for that house right?
Lot one.
Yeah, we'll be right in through here.
Okay. So I imagine that would require clearing all the trees that are there? Because the butters, right, those lots go right up to the woods right now.
Correct, their existing driveway is right against the lot line.
There'd be no trees left there between the two lots?
Well, there is a little bit of a grade change there as you get in. A little bit of a hole, actually, goes down into a depression and then back up. So, you know, I mean, we'd like to minimize the width of the driveway and the disturbance. Haven't looked at it that closely as of yet as to exactly what the clearing would be. But Tom would, generally, they, Tom prefers to leave as many trees as possible, you know. Particularly in this scenario, I would envision, you know, a very narrow driveway coming through a wooded area to provide some buffer on each side and then open up as it got back to the house.
Okay, is that something that the, the board considers when you make these decisions?
Yep, absolutely. Anything else from the public?
How you doing? My name's Scott Doherty, 5 Pondview Road. If you go with the other plan, where you're shifting everything to the right, how, what would be the distance between Mr. DePlacido's property and our property?
Which plant, sir, I'm sorry?
I believe it's the middle, where the cul-de-sac's going up the middle.
Cul-de-sac drawn up the middle?
I believe Mr. Wellington was saying that you couldn't, the open space, you wanted to shift everything over to the right more.
That scenario?
No, or with the U road, did he?
Either or, that one, Mr. Wellington was saying, if you shift all those over to the right, closer to the butters.
That was the one, the one way.
Yeah, well, I'm not for the U road, I'm for this.
Okay, before that, didn't you say you're gonna move everything closer to the butters?
No, not me.
Not on this one, it was another design that we were talking about. It was, it was the curved one.
The one you're talking about has two agresses on to Holbrook Street.
This guy here. This one sliding down?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the one you're referring to? Okay.
Okay, what would be the distance on that plan there?
On this plan, as it currently is?
Yes.
If you shifted it, are you worried about the pond?
Exactly, if you're gonna, if that plan is gonna be approved, if you shift that, how far to our property, roughly?
From the lots?
Yes.
You'd probably be, you know, right at zero if we shifted it all the way over. So the common lot line was the lot line of these building lots to the back of these lots.
Okay, so it would be right up against our property then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This one, as well as the one on Holbrook, they would go right up to the property line?
Yeah, I mean, the conventional's gonna go right up to the property. You know, either scenario of a, of a conventional layout or a conventional with A and R lots, you know, a common lot line, you know, the entire property would be utilized in that scenario.
And the one with the well would also, right?
Right.
The one with the well?
Yes.
The one with the well would also do that?
Skinny driveway.
Can I clear all the trees?
Yes, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Are you gonna clear pretty much all the trees between the two properties, I guess is what I'm asking?
Again, it depends on which scenario and what the grading's gonna look like. We do have a rare setback that has to be maintained for zoning, that the house can't be within a certain distance of the rare setback. And that varies, I don't know it off the top of my head, I believe it's 50 feet.
Okay.
When it abuts, you know...
Existing property?
A property that's, a property line that's not within the development. In other words, this line, we could maintain a 15-foot setback, but a boundary of the original parcel, we need to, I believe, maintain 50 feet
Okay.
from a building to the, to the property line.
And we have a tree clearing by law, there's certain requirements in terms of certain trees have to be left standing. It's done dimensionally based on the rear corners of the foundation, basically, as I understand it. So there are some, there are some protections because we've had problems with prior developments where there's been clear cut and that definitely won't be happening.
Can you put the grade plan up on that?
Thank you very much.
And this?
Yeah.
So on the right-hand, on the right-hand side, you've got a, a grade change going down, what, 10 feet or so? Back from the road?
Excuse me?
Yeah, really.
We're at about elevation 188 at the road here.
Mm-hmm.
That goes down to 180, to a very low spot here, small low spot, 180, 182. So six to eight feet, you know, to here, and it climbs back up to 196. So it goes down, six to eight feet, and then up 16 feet or so from that low point.
Yeah.
And there's another, much smaller, 194 to 198, smaller depression right there.
Just have a couple more questions, if that's okay?
Yeah.
In the well scenario, is there anything that we're gonna see? I mean, is it all gonna be underground? Is there any building? Is, what is it gonna look like if a well goes in place?
Pretty much undisturbed. There will be a building, probably not even the size of this room. Maybe, maybe this would be a good, good size to, maybe a minor fence around it, but, and just a gravel road usually going in. I mean, we just, we did pave a road to one of our other well, well sites, but that's it, pretty much.
I just had one other question. Is there any blasting that's gonna happen with this construction?
Not that we're aware of. We've done test pits in this portion of the property. We dug 16, 18 test pits down 14 feet and we haven't seen any rock ledge, nothing.
Back to my pet peeve on the two trees. Can I consider the town notified that that road, that distance is unacceptable as a, as a roadway? And they'll take action, or do I need to do something to...
You can, we can talk if you want to. I'd be glad to go up here a little bit.
Okay.
Herb, would you walk up and point out where those trees are, just so we know?
It's a coincidence, the trees are 19 feet apart and the bayou is 19 feet apart.
I didn't get that.
Yeah.
This is Pondview.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
This is Pondview.
That's the driveway.
Jerry Bloom is here.
Yep.
That's driveway. And then just where the road begins to curve to the left here are the two trees opposite each other.
Okay.
This one on the right is really, you know, I just, I hate to say, but you know, it's a typical tree a teenager's gonna hit sometimes.
All right, thanks.
So the trees are, the trees are on either side of the roadway?
Restricting the width of the available road.
Must be right to the edge of pavement.
So the roadway isn't 19 feet the entire length?
Less. The pavement width is 19 feet.
The pavement is 19 feet the entire length?
Yeah.
And then, and then there, you got a couple of trees right up against...
Right up against the pavement, it sounds.
I missed that.
Did he want to say the trees?
That's good.
Okay.
I think he wants to...
Take it down?
He's being taken down because it does slow down the traffic. And when you have to yell at people to slow down because they're doing 50 miles an hour through our street, that's a problem.
So they look for any deterrent to keep people from speeding. And it's, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem. I mean, you know, I'm not even comfortable letting my teenager walk down the street because of the increased traffic and the increased speeding that's going on. And it's people who live in that area that are causing a lot of the problem.
Okay, I'm gonna open it back up to the board to take one more comment.
I'm kind of amazed over all these years that there hasn't been a guardrail at the bottom of Holbrook, that curve there, you know, you know what I'm talking about? Anybody not know? When you're coming down Holbrook toward 115, there should have been a guardrail there in a long time.
It's another one of those deterrents to speeding.
Not having one?
Not having one.
Okay, Tom, did you have some insight for us?
Well, I just wanted to speak to some of the problematic issues. Our report gets very specific and deals with some of the issues that Mr. Wellington addressed about consistency with the purposes of open space. And we gave a whole series of things like the right-of-way width should be a secondary street and whether the lots, because they also have frontage on Holbrook Street, can be, have reduced. There's a whole bunch of things that I think, mister, the, I think that can be just worked out in the, in the design. But to speak at a programmatic level, I think with this site, you start with Holbrook Street. And the current phase that engineers are using is context-sensitive design. Mast DOT and others are very much into this. And I think what we need here is some extremely sensitive, context-sensitive design. I think what you would want to do is kind of a delicate balance to improve the site distance along Holbrook Street while still trying to maintain its scenic road character. The hierarchy that I would impose if you have a subdivision with one entrance. And intuitively, before I found out about Mr. McGee's concerns about the well site, that would have been the guidance that I would give, is you wanna pick one entrance to this subdivision and get the best site distance possible for that. So the hierarchy of improvements under that scenario to Holbrook Street would need to focus on improving site distance at the subdivision entrance. Maybe we wanna do something with that horizontal curve in terms of cutting the embankment back. And that's very impactful because as you cut it back, you're clearing trees. So again, it's a delicate balance. If you stand out there, there's a vertical curve that really limits site distance between the stone posts and the curb there. But if you look at it, although there are houses across the street, their driveways ramp up to the road. So to lower that vertical curve by a couple of feet would help the driveway owner in addition to helping site distance. So I think there's, a lot of attention should be addressed to Holbrook Street. What can be done with minor improvements to, to benefit site distance? I don't think you're talking about immense construction costs because we don't wanna turn it into a superhighway. That would run counter to the butters' concerns about increased speed. But I do think there's a bunch of things you can do with some minor improvements to that segment of Holbrook Street to improve the site distance. If you wanted to add a sidewalk, obviously, that's a significant benefit to the community, but it's also very impactful to the site with a 33-foot right-of-way. Among the different scenarios, I think the only one that makes sense to me is the open space subdivision, but with the single cul-de-sac in the center of the site. That seems to make every bit of sense to me. If we were to move towards the well preservation scenario, and I think Mr. DePlacido should be commended as being an extraordinary corporate citizen to consider that because I'm sure it's not in, in his interest to do that. But, you know, I think under that scenario, you'd want to try to improve site distance along the entirety of Holbrook Street. And maybe, as Mr. Palumbo suggested, maybe you could have some kind of common driveway scenarios that would reduce the number of driveways, particularly on that easterly corner or as was otherwise suggested, kind of also shift that development. The well site sort of strikes me as being extraordinarily difficult because essentially that well has to be in one point, which is right in the center of that circle. There's no, not much flexibility to, as to where you can put the well itself, except maybe it can shift a little bit to the, to the west. But, you know, if Mr. DePlacido can tolerate the 90 days or so of testing, you know, that, if the town can do it, that's something to move ahead with right away and find out if it's feasible. Because, you know, like a lot of complicated designs, there are conflicting design values here. You wouldn't wanna put all the houses along Holbrook Street unless we were achieving another very valuable public service, which is the, which is the well site, so. Other than that, I think, Rick, you can go through the report. I think it's fairly self-evident.
Yeah, that's fine. You've obviously been through it. No major questions.
Anybody else, any other thoughts? So I think, Ray, Ray, did you have any thoughts?
Tom put it very well. I think he really encapsulated a lot of my thoughts and my concerns. And I agree with the, you know, with the cul-de-sac design, I think that makes the most sense. But in light of, in light of the water issue and the possibility of doing that, there is some opportunity there and I don't think we should waste that opportunity, but, you know, let's seek it out and see what that brings us. And again, if Mr. DePlacido's willing to wait that period of time to decide, I, you know, kudos to him because I think that's, that's great for the town. Thank you.
All right, so it looks like we have a consensus that the preferred plan layout is the open space plan, one cul-de-sac road, the one that John pointed out that he liked. But we'd be willing to lean towards the Holbrook well site, but we'd love to have the town do that 90-day investigation, if you're open to that. the town do that 90-day investigation, if you're open to that. That being the case, if everybody agrees to that general direction, I don't know if, you know, it makes sense to obviously continue the, the public hearing. But our next meeting is only two weeks away, which isn't going to get you where we need to go. So what are your thoughts on moving forward?
Actually, I just had a question for Mr. McGee here. Is that, could you talk to your consultants and things and maybe get a timeline schedule? And maybe within two weeks, we could just come back to the board here and just find out what a timeline schedule may be, and then continue it out to the end of that for another reason. It might be October 15, or whatever it might be with that. And I would just extend it out to that type of timeframe, instead of just guessing.
Yeah. Do you think you could have some feedback to Tom in a couple of weeks on timeline to do this initial testing?
Just trying to think. The cost for going out there and throwing a couple of, a couple of two-and-a-half-inch drills probably costs anywhere around $35,000 to $50,000. And if there's something else, if there's, so I'm just trying to think. Our consultants usually do this, go out and solicit bids for that kind of money, or at least get three quotes. And so you're not talking about test results or anything. You're just talking about a time that we can get in there and do it.
Sort of mapping out your whole, mapping out your process. Within two weeks, kind of have an idea of how it's all going to play out.
Right. Well, I did that all in front of you. Yeah. And I think in two weeks' time, I can tell you the timeline and who the contractor will be. That's probably, pretty much all I can do in two weeks' time.
So you want to request us to continue it till, to our next meeting, then, on August?
August 12. Before you do, is there any question that, about the yield plan? Are we, do we, is it confirmed that there are nine lots in the yield plan?
It sounds like through the A and R option that it could happen. I don't think through the one where the cul-de-sac's in the buffer zone that it's a slam dunk. But it sounded like there was the option of creating those three A and R plans, and then he could nestle the others conventionally around that.
You looked at that?
We, we did. We did not raise the specific issue that Mr. Weddleton did about maintaining the 100-foot buffer. But my thought would be that could be engineered. I guess that plan is not before us at the moment. But it seems as though that nine lots are likely to be obtainable on this site.
I mean, I just figured if it was a basic, if it's a baseline question, you needed an answer.
I think Rick showed us a plan, just by moving the cul-de-sac, that showed nine lots, correct?
Correct.
Conventionally, yeah.
The A and R.
That works.
It's this one.
Okay. This one. Okay. Just, just checking. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay. So somebody needs to?
Motion to continue to August 12.
And we already have a 7:30, so maybe we say 7:40 in case they don't come.
I'll move to continue the public hearing for Winding Hollow. The preliminary subdivision review and open space special permit, nine lots off 38 Holbrook Street till August 12 at?
7:45.
7:45 PM. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
And again, thank you, Mr. DePlacido, for your willingness to do this.
You too.
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you to the abutters.
Betsy, can you track the date that this was submitted? There was no preliminary, right? So it's 135 days. We're up to lose track of that date if this thing gets really pushed out.
We're up to for the town to make everybody happy and do the major.
Oh, you don't have to do that, but it just, you know, keep the board apprised as to what's up.
Town's money. Widen it, take down that slope for sidewalk.
Or at least, at least share the cost somehow, right?
Exactly. I think if they go to water, well, they'd be so thrilled and free. They'd probably just about get some funding to do that.
They're being neecells, you mean?
Maybe at most.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
As long as we keep the hearing going. I want to speak for my peers.
Yeah, yeah.
But it makes sense because it's a well for free. But, you know.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, I think everybody on this board received the analysis that DPW.
I was thinking of this as a subdivision.
Might have missed it.
Not yet.
I brought it tonight. I have it.
An analysis, and it's pretty clear that we're going to be faced with a decision, a significant decision at some point in the not-too-distant future.
See, the problem is when they go to the long-term test, this, they go to a long-term test, it's, it's an endurance test with a bigger pipe and it costs a lot of.
We got these Dunkin' Donuts things down.
You have to drink a lot of Dunkin' Donuts to keep doing them, though.
I'm for 242, I guess, huh?
All right. Are we going to move on to our site plan modification? What do we have to do for that?
It is a public hearing.
It is.
It is?
Yeah, because we didn't want to treat it as a minor, I think. So it.
All right. Yes, that's right. You're correct. I remember that. Yep.
Yep. Let's, we're going to move on to open the public hearing for 242 Dedham Street.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law Section 4B and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section F-111. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 29, 2014, at 8:00 PM in Room 124 at Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to a modified site plan application for property located at 242 Dedham Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, John Premus of Norfolk, Mass, is proposing to modify the approved site plan by reconfiguring site entrances, adjusting building dimensions, relocating site amenities, which includes relocating parking and dumpster, and the addition of an external freezer and pump island lighting. The property is located in the C-1 zoning district. Reference assessors map 19 Block 69, Lot 31. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
You'll need to just grab a microphone, please. It's just for the people viewing at home.
Yes. My name is Richard Merrick, Merrick Engineering and Milis. And I'm representing the applicants who are the new owners of the property. And as you stated, it is an approved site plan, including a building, which is a multi-use building, which is located back here, some fuel pumps here, gas pumps. And this was intended to have a drive-up in the back, with window service in the back. And the original plan had a single entrance off of Dedham Street. And a single entrance off of Sharon's Ave. So the new owners are owners of the Dunkin' Donuts in Norfolk, as well as Walpole, two different individuals who partnered up for this particular project. So the plan is to have the building be a Dunkin' Donuts deli-type, subway-type restaurant, and then a convenience store, all sharing a open central core. It's kind of the new, the new idea. If you've been to any of the new facilities, that's the way they do it. So, so you would, you know, pay for your gas inside. So the, the building they're proposing is almost the same. It's a little bit smaller. The original building was 150 feet long, and this is 140 feet long. And as far as for this modification, we have altered the entrance to be two drives on Dedham Street, an in and an out, one drive on Sharon's Ave. We've still provide the drive-around for the, for the drive-up. This, for the Dunkin' Donuts portion, would have a two-window situation that's kind of like some of the McDonald's, where you pay, first window, pick it up at the second. Works a little more efficiently, I guess, internally. There will be a freezer, but it's an exterior freezer, but it's entered from the building. So there's no outside entrance to the freezer. So it's just like an attachment to the building. And so I know Tom had a question about the entrance to the freezer, but it's, it's accessed from the inside. There will also be a little section at the end of the building where there'll be an ATM. So we, we rearranged the spaces a little bit in order to accommodate the two drives. We rearranged the front spaces, putting the handicaps in the middle because the doors are going to be close to the middle of the building as opposed to on the edge. So that, that is one modification. With the single drive, there were parking spaces on either side, so we combined them into a single unit here in the front. And before, the vacuum situation was over here, the vacuum and air pump. So we moved that to here. This parking arrangement was always there, and the loading area was always there. So we didn't change that. We did widen the Sharon's Ave entrance and exit, primarily because the, the fuel trucks servicing the station will come in. And in order for them to make the turnout, you really need a wider entrance. I don't think for vehicular traffic, normal cars, you don't need that wide an entrance. But for the, for the servicing of the, of the gas pumps, we would need the wider entrance. These are standard 24-foot driveways, meeting the Mass DPW standards, having 30-foot radiuses. And the other adjustments to the plan all work around those particular changes. You know, we, we, some of the landscaping had to be adjusted because there's no longer, you know, this driveway where there wasn't driveway before. Lighting was modified slightly because now we have two entrances instead of one. So we actually added one light over here and moved this, the light for here over to here. We adjusted the septic system so that it would fit with this type of arrangement. And we also adjusted the location of the catch basins. We didn't really change anything, but we had to move some catch basins and move some drain lines. So we had the appropriate setbacks from the septic system. So before, the septic was on both sides in two fields. We moved the two fields together so that the septic will be in this area here. The drainage still goes to the same place as infiltration in the back. There's infiltration here for the water that would go out onto the, to the highway, Route 1A. So those will be piped to the same infiltration that was there before. And so it's, it's essentially stayed the same. Grading-wise, I tried to arrange it so that the water ran down here, and then it's piped back into the infiltration field. Lights, again, are pretty much the same. Signage, there was a sign approved on the original plan. The intent really isn't to change it, but they, I gave Betsy today a picture of a typical sign that they, that they would like to use. It's a pylon sign with six or eight, identifying all of the uses and probably the, the regular gas and the premium gas price on the sign. Pretty much, pretty much the same size, although we would like to discuss a little bit about the sign with you later on. So that's essentially it. We have filed a state permit for the driveways in the front, so that's under review. I won't file the septic plan back to the Board of Health till I'm sure that the Planning Board is satisfied with locations of drainage and so on and so forth. Oh, the other, the other item that the, they changed was originally had five pumps. It's going to have four pump islands now, but under the same canopy. So I guess that's it. I'll leave it open for questions.
You did benching about landscaping. Is there any landscaping along the side there and in the front in those, that was?
Yes, yes. Similar to what was there before. I basically just took what was there, moved it to different places. I think we probably have a little extra. I adjusted the numbers. Yes, yeah. One, I'm sorry, one other item that we discussed last time was the original design had too few canopy lights. This is based on the guy who's going to be running the gas station. So I, I made, I put 12 in here. We talked about kind of doing the same thing as the station down the center of town. They have 12. So I put 12 in. I'm getting a lighting diagram. I should have it next week. And we can, we can look at that soon as that comes in. The idea is not to overlight it, but to have sufficient lights service the, and those are down, straight-down lights. So that would be very limited in scope.
The fuel, fuel trucks with the increased width of the opening on the Sharon's, will they be able to take a left? You know, just looking at the radius there, is that going to be possible with that width? Is that the idea?
That's the idea. I think they will. And they might choose to go around. You can go around now.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to avoid, is traffic up Sharon's Ave. So if you could please look at that.
I will. I'll double-check. I know they can get out. Pretty sure they can do the.
It, it does work. It works with the WB50.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
And they can get in here, either going this way or this way. So that works, too.
That may have to be, you know, managed in terms of the communication with the drivers to make sure, because it's, I'm sure it's a more difficult turn than going the other direction, so.
I, I think, you know, looking around, each station has their own particular places where the, that the guys can park, and everybody can get in and out. And I think they get used to that after a while. We have a space here, though, for them over here.
Phil, we're off, listen, one of the owners of the property, the gas operator, he's a supplier also. So it's not going to be different, different drivers coming in and out. I mean, it's his own guys, his own suppliers.
Agreed.
So we shouldn't have an issue with different drivers coming into the property.
Can I ask a question in that retaining wall?
In the back?
No, on the side here.
Yes.
Just regarding that site distance, how high is that wall?
Well, the, the problem, the problem is that the, the property over here is a little high, which is why the retaining wall is there.
And who owns that property?
Hugo. So what I'm envisioning is that with minor work on that, we can keep that down to.
I guess the point I'm trying to get at is, you've got the extra access drive right there. Is that for the properties? Yes, that.
Yes.
Is that for the property to the right of that?
Yes, that's existing.
And what's that wall? Is that wall four feet high or so, that retaining wall?
No, it's not that high.
It's not?
No.
Does it create any type of a site?
No.
It doesn't?
Not to my knowledge. Doesn't appear.
John, Tom looked at that pretty closely. That just came up before.
I think you can cut the wall back and eliminate for some distance. Yes.
I just was questioning whether they could grade that, get rid of the wall and just gray it to make it.
You could move it back 50 feet in any way. So it would eliminate the site distance issue. Yeah, and, and.
That should be done?
Yes. I mean, the reason we can't show it on here is it's Hugo's property. But it doesn't do anything to detriment, detrimental to his property. It's better for him to.
So if you took that back?
Yeah.
Whatever, that would work?
We would work. We can work that out.
It's existing wall, right, that was there from the old property?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
So I know we received quite a few comments. I don't know if you want to bring us through the highlights, Tom?
Sure. I think the change in access is beneficial. I think that's going to work quite well.
With the two drives?
Yeah. It works very well, too, with the, the fuel delivery truck. It would come in the northern entrance, I forget the, what is that? The easterly entrance, I guess, and would then turn short of the pump islands and would position itself with the truck, protecting the fueling.
position itself with the truck protecting the fueling portals on the tank. So that's an almost ideal situation, and that would exit, as Mr. Palumbo said, through the exit at the rear onto Sharon's Avenue, taking a U-turn. And we looked at that in terms of turning radii and stuff, and it seems to work.
Where are the underground tanks? Just as a matter of fact.
Right here. Under these parking spaces, yeah.
So the truck would shield them from any traffic that occurred on the site at the time. Our comment to the driveways under zoning is supposed to be 250 feet or more apart. They're 120 feet, so I think that's something that requires zoning relief.
Just a comment, there is under that provision that requires that. It does say the planning board can do something else if it's, if it seems reasonable. So I think you might be able to make the decision here as opposed to the zoning board.
I thought that was under J4A5, not J4A4, but we gave you the option of relief under J4A5 by the planning board.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to eliminate one of the drives on Dedham, the out, the out one, and make everybody go in through Dedham and out through Sharon?
Well, the owner expressed a preference based upon other stations to have it be in and out, and I don't really see a problem with it. I mean, a service station and a donut shop are kind of a very automobile-oriented use, and I mean, it runs counter to zoning, but I think from a circulation point of view, it's not a problem. I mean, ideally, you'd have nothing near any intersection anywhere, but, you know, that's the way
And there's a lot of in and outs here, because, you know, you get people coming into the donut shop and in and out on the gas station, so keeping them separated does work better.
Right, I was suggesting the in only off of 1A and the out only off of Sharon's.
Right, right.
With the intent of going on Sharon's back out to 1A, not to go into the neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
I'm not saying that wouldn't work.
Just a question.
I think it's the
I just didn't know if, you know, the frequency of all those driveways was getting to be so overbearing, overwhelming, that that would be something worthwhile considering or not.
We would mark them, you know, in only, out only, so.
It does seem like the flow would be very good with this revised plan, and you're kind of separating the clients, you know, the
Yes, the gas station from the donut. Yeah, mostly donut people, you're right. Probably going to go out this way.
Yes, right, right.
And then the gas people will probably go out this way.
Okay.
And they're both kind of quick hits, you know, you're only there for two, three minutes on either one, yeah.
And then you have the gas and donut people who go out the back too. I would place myself in that category.
Efficiency.
So comment three is the offset to Hugo's driveway. I think the planning board can give relief with respect to that. Comment four, the state highway, as Mr. American said, they've applied for the curb cut permits with the district office. Suggesting six wayfinding sign is just pointing to the drive-through. We're suggesting, although Mr. American drew those curb cuts in accordance with mass DOT standards, they're not really applicable here, so we're talking about cutting back the curb radii on the easterly site driveway on the left side as you enter, making that a small radius because nobody
So this would come in and go this way?
Yes, exactly. And a similar scenario on the other one, because when you have enter and exit only, the only people entering from that direction on that side are entering from the other side of the road.
Right.
So it's better to channelize it and reinforce the circulation.
Would mass highway have a problem with that?
I think they'd prefer it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to screw up the state permit.
You know, the old axiom of laying out any kind of vehicular facility, only put the pavement where you need it, and if it isn't, you want to take it out because it doesn't support the driving function, so.
So you're saying that there's a different radii on each side of the driveway?
Yes, for example, on the easterly driveway, you'd have the 30-foot on one side.
Be almost straight through on this side.
Bring it down like five feet or something, because nobody would ever turn there.
And on the other one?
It'd be the opposite.
Yeah, yeah, be the opposite.
So septic system needs to be adjusted. Comment nine, this is a little bit difficult. They previously got relief from the zoning board to increase the impervious materials coverage from 60 to 72 percent. Now they're at 77 and a half percent. So either that'd have to be addressed in a redesign, or else you're going to have to go back to the zoning board on
We, because of the new building, we could eliminate three or four parking spaces, but they really don't want to, you know, it's always better to have.
I don't know if the planning board has an issue, but it's, it's just a regulatory thing. You'd have to go through.
Well, let me ask, and I'm not sure this would fully address it, but at one time, you know, we did have an island-type concept separating some spaces in the front.
We, yeah, I can do that. I mean, I got a little extra room over here, so I can put a separator in here. I didn't know if that was because you guys asked for it, or is that was just a design item? So we could put a little splitter here, and we could eliminate one space even, and uh
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm not suggesting that that's an issue for me in terms of the impervious lot coverage. I'm just saying that's one way to possibly get at it. I don't think you are going to eliminate, you know, a spot or two. I don't know.
Well, we plan on having our employees park in those front eight spots. No cycle. So I mean, we really don't have a lot of parking to get. Can't really afford to get rid of anything.
Well, we can, well, there's room to put a small strip in there like there was before without eliminating space, yeah.
Relative to that issue, you had, you mentioned further down something about outdoor seating. You didn't talk about it, but I'm wondering if there's any possibility to switch what is now impervious to a pervious situation, such as wherever this outdoor seating might be.
Over here next to the building, yeah. It could work. It could be pavers, yeah. Yeah, we could, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
It's going to be hard to make up the 7 percent.
It's a lot, yes.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, so we could get, we could do better, though, you know.
Yeah, I mean, minimize.
We've done a lot of pavers lately. Different jobs.
Well, you got relief to 72, and now you're at 77 and a half, so you pick up 5 and a half percent.
Yeah, it's a
It's about 4,000.
Is it 4,000?
Yes.
We're trying to make this brief, but
Aren't the lots on Shire all 80%? Isn't that considered the same district? How do they get 80% coverage?
I don't know.
Must have been some kind of
This is, this is the C1.
They're not in the same district? The ones up by the industrial park?
They may be off.
Yeah, they're probably off.
We also did a, we also did a comprehensive plan for that. So do you think they all are 80%?
Yeah, there's a sign that says approved 80%. If you drive by, there's a huge sign.
Is that because they have a common drainage system up there, Tom?
Yes.
They do have a common drainage system. I forget the mechanism by which that was granted, but the rationale was, yes, it's common drainage and common septic, so.
It sounds like it was made a site-specific decision to respond to some other design measure that they were putting in place to allow more paved surface.
Okay, 11, special permit for parking in the front yard this time along Sharon's Avenue. Comment 12, the grading should be slightly adjusted to direct all runoff away from the canopy because of the positive limiting barrier that's underneath it that can't have water washing across it.
Just one comment, Tom. The seven spaces, those are exactly the same as were there before. We changed these, but not these.
Oh, all right, then you already have it. I apologize for that. Um, the drainage has changed a little bit, but the prior drainage calc should be pretty much valid. We did a report on them. The one thing we might add is TSS removal because they have added particle separator Discussed a little bit soil and groundwater information that has never been submitted for the site. The board previously granted a waiver allowing use of the, testing on the adjacent property, which is fine. We just wanted to call to this property owner's attention the fact that there have never been tests in that large recharge area behind the building, and if we get into construction and the groundwater or the soil isn't what it thinks, what we think it is, it's going to be a significant problem because there's no place else to put that. So just raising that, just for the owner's information, that that may be a bit of a Freezer retaining wall, gas storage tanks are fine. So a lot of detail here in terms of the fire suppression and all the gasoline service items that should be improved by the fire department and the building inspector prior to construction, protecting that outdoor seating area with some sort of barrier in terms of protecting it from the vehicles and the drive-through.
We would put some bollards around the edge, as well as the rear door, right in front of the rear door.
I guess the only other thing is, I think the board wanted the revised building design and the canopy design referred back to the design review committee, and we're looking forward to receiving the photometric plan, particularly with respect to the lighting levels under the canopy.
Yes, I should have that next week.
The design review committee looked at this last night, but we haven't got a report from it yet.
Okay, yeah.
You're on design review?
No, but I helped facilitate getting the information to them last evening.
Anybody have any questions with Tom's comments? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up to public. Any comments from the public? Just please use the microphone and state your name.
I am Dave McLean from Sharon Ave. Because of your new GIS abouters list, I was kept off the abouters list, and I only lived like two houses up from where they're doing construction, which is confusing to me, but that's the way it is.
Sorry.
The question I have is, one is, I've always had questions about lighting. I know there's a new lighting plan, and I know the hours of operations is up to 11:00 PM. I hope it's not like some gas stations where they flood the lighting. It looks like Fenway Park. I hope they subdue the lighting, which I believe they will, after they close, but I just don't want the place to be lit up like it was like, you know, Patriots Place. That's my biggest concern. The other concern is the overflow of traffic. If they run out of parking space, are they going to just park on Sharon Ave? Because if I was going into a place, that would, that's what I would do if I didn't see a parking space. My first reaction is I'll just park on Sharon Ave. And I could see, there's people now parking with bait thing. There's people parking there today, so I could see it almost causing a traffic jam. And when I get out of my house to get on 1A, it's a problem because of the traffic. I just don't want to make sure there's a tremendous amount of overflow. I'm not sure how the bylaws read or how the town laws read, whether you can park on Sharon Ave or not, but it's a consideration I'd like the planning board to look into for the overflow.
You can park on daylight hours, right?
I think the Board of Selectmen, the street commissioners, could prohibit parking. I would guess that's legal process, so you could
Yeah, they're the ones that would approve a sign.
Take the end 200 feet and not allow parking or whatever. That would be a recommendation from the planning board to the Board of Selectmen.
This is the same setup as the store now.
Which really becomes an enforcement thing. I mean, you can put signs up, right?
It's a convenient place to park.
This is Massachusetts. People always have these signs.
You know, as a business come in, I just don't want more and more people. Now it's fine, but, you know, the amount of traffic there could be quite heavy at times, so just a consideration to look into.
There's quite a few parking spaces here for the typical Dunkin' Donuts, so it's more than we would usually provide.
Would the, sorry, Rick, would the town allow us to put parallel spots for employees only on Sharon Ave?
I think he's saying he doesn't want parking on Sharon's Ave.
For employees only, though, right?
The law reads, no, you're not supposed to park.
Sharon Ave is convenient. If there's parking, then the
Could you or the owner address the concern about lighting after 11:00 PM?
Yeah, typically, we already had a conversation outside. Typically, what people do is don't shut the lights off, but maybe shut half the lights off so that you have some security lighting there. And that's what we do at Kai Deals and things like that, so that's easily done after a certain period of time, whatever the closing time is. Was, that's a question that we discussed today, my clients and I. What were the hours of operation approved originally?
I don't remember. I don't recall. I think we had some wording in there as far as fuel deliveries in terms of trying to avoid issue, or I think we may have left it fairly open, but if there was an issue, you know, we wanted to make it clear that, you know, the town could specify, you know,
Sure, oh, okay, yeah.
daytime, nighttime, whatever. I'm sure at night, when there's no customers, it's safer, but you have neighbors, so depending on
They were more concerned about hours of, like, the operation of the Dunkin' Donuts, because the one in, most of them open at five, and so they like to open at five. Didn't know if it was specified or not, yeah.
I don't think it was.
Okay, that's fine.
And it, I mean, it's a, it's a major roadway, in my opinion. I mean, I would think that in order to compete, there's a certain aspect in terms of
I think they all open at the same time, you know, all the ones in Walpole, they all open at the same time. Tom gets up there.
Donuts are absolutely necessary.
Yes.
The decision should be referenced, because unless we change it, I mean, they're
Yes, all right, I'll check into that, yeah. I'll look into that.
Any other comments, questions? Just grab the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Michael Don. I own Boy Sharon Ave, which is very confined for both sites. I love the conditions, and I'd like to meet them. I believe there's a well head right on the flower shop, 30 feet from the road. It's about here. I don't know if that's a problem for anyone.
No, shouldn't be a problem. Most, you know, most wells are very deep, and everything here is shallow water table. Drainage drops into the water table.
Doesn't it have to be 100 feet from the septic system?
A hundred, yeah.
Is that 100 feet from the septic?
We didn't, I think so. I'll check with that, but we didn't move this part of the septic system, so if it was okay before, it should be okay.
What's the percut rate there?
I don't know off the top of my, Tom, do you remember?
It's quite rapid. I forget what it is. I would guess it's probably two minute.
Well, that can make it 150 feet from a septic.
It's faster than two, yeah, yeah. But like I said, it was already approved, so I suspect we're okay.
The only thing is, I'm not sure if it, if that well wasn't shown on the prior plan, I'm not sure you would intuitively think that there's a water supply well right on 1A, so I think we need to
Okay, we'll check.
Double check that.
We'll check it out, yeah.
On that opening hours, did the previous applicant have a special permit to operate, to operate a retail establishment? Did you know? Because I think in that permit, they set the hours of operation.
Would that be through the zoning board?
Yeah, you might want to check and see, because you may already have hours established on that.
It's 6:00 AM, so we're asking for five, so
Then you got to go back to them.
It was at 6:00 to 11:00?
Yeah.
6:00 to 11:00. Were you going back to them anyways for the impervious?
We were two hitter.
Yeah, we probably will.
You're choosing to go back to them because you're choosing to increase your impervious beyond what they asked for.
And the driveway spacing issue. If this board can't give
One stop.
Which would be a one stop.
With all your issues, all your issues at once.
There you go, yes.
You should know what you're asking for when you walk in.
I would check that exact measurement from that well and that septic.
Oh, sure, we will. Yes, yeah. I didn't pay attention to whether there was a well nearby when I was redoing the septic, so.
I don't blame you, but
I hope that didn't slip through.
That would rattle things up for you.
It will. We can deal with it.
So, 11 o'clock at night? Really? That must be the gas station. That's not Dunkin' Donuts, is it? It's a gas station.
I have a store that's open until 11:00. I mean, because I have a 20, a couple 24 hours.
24-hour Dunkin' Donuts?
Two 24 hours.
Where have I been? Sleeping. You should be. I've got teenagers. I didn't know.
Yeah. You can always take coffee and donuts.
24-hour Dunkin' Donuts.
One other point I'd like to just bring, I'd like to get some feel from our consultant and our planner on the proposed style of sign.
Yeah, yeah. You said you wanted to talk about that.
I have a question on the sign. The issue here is, you know, typically, the gas station gets the top billing, but of course, the owners here are the Dunkin' Donuts people. So, they would be relegated to a 12-square-foot sign. So, if we wanted to see if we could do, split the two, the size of the two signs, so the golf sign was a little smaller and the Dunkin' was the same size, would that be zoning board or would that be you guys? The way the bylaw reads, you can have 124 square foot and then the rest 12s. So, we'd kind of like 18 and then 18, and then 12.
Is this a different sign format than the previous applicant?
Yes, a little bit, yes.
Where did you get the previous sign okay from? Planning board?
It was on the site plan, so I assume it
Yeah, it was probably the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody know? Is that us or?
Gino addressed this issue.
Sign? Did you talk about the sign?
Were they still going through a planning board process?
It's an item number three.
Were they still going through a planning board process? Would that let them change the sign specs at the planning board level?
I would have to double check that.
Yeah, I don't know what, whether there's some flexibility there with you guys and I.
Oh, yeah, my sign drawing back there. You can have it. I have one.
He says a special permit, but not by whom.
You have one, too.
No, but he also said it expired.
I don't know that I can give any particular professional insight into the sign. I mean, I, it's obviously what they want in terms of making the property work. It is a commercial district. It is not out of line with what you might see. It's unfortunate. Did you discuss that with the design review committee? Sign?
I did not because we didn't go to them. And they did, actually, they hadn't seen that. So, we'll have to send that over to them.
Can you get this to them?
Yeah, can you email that to me, Rick? I don't think I have the sign.
Can you do it in color? See, that's why I brought it over to them.
Can I scan it? Well, I can.
I can scan it in
I have one in their mailbox.
I can scan it in color if you can print it in color.
Yeah, it's, I was going to email.
I can print it in color, and I can come the extensive five-minute trip from my office to here.
No, no, I can give them a copy. I was going to try and email them a color copy.
Yes, I'll get you one tomorrow.
If you can just email it to me, I'll send it to the design review.
Who sells the beer and wine? Subway?
Yeah, that'd be great, huh? No, potentially the convenience store.
So, I mean, what is the plan in terms of utility at this point, occupancy? I mean, we don't need to know the specific names of the categories.
So, we have a golf distributor out of the Worcester-Chelmsford area. It's got about, there's three brothers. They got about 15 stores. Well, this will be their 15th. And the deli's either Subway or Michael's out of Rentham.
Oh, do we get to vote?
Exactly. So, in terms of New England Farms, is that something that potential future?
That's a retrofit, that's an existing location in Middleborough. Actually, the gentleman that's going to be, that we've sent out a bid for, he's a petroleum contractor. He actually is the landlord of that place.
That's just a sample. That's not Lil' Wett. It's a sample of what he has in Middleborough.
Oh, okay.
It's like a mobile on the right.
This is not the actual site. This is just a typical.
No, I mean, you know, there's quite a bit there. You know, and John asked a legitimate question about the beer and wine, I mean, so.
I wouldn't put that outside.
No.
Parking, you had said it was similar to other Dunkin' Donutses, the amount of parking spaces, but we have four establishments going in. Is that right? Not just one?
Yeah, but, you know, they're kind of complimentary.
Yeah, well, I understand that. It just seems like very few parking spots for four places if it gets busy, you know. Plus, and how many cars go in the queue around there?
What did we get? 10, 12, yeah.
It just seems like it's very small to me. I don't know.
I was just going by my experience, so, you know. A lot of the Dunkin' Donut business is the drive-through business.
I was talking about four establishments there.
Yeah.
That's the reason I brought up the overflow to Sharon Ave, because right now, shy apart, the increase in traffic going up Sharon Ave gets more and more and more as the businesses up there gets up there. And if you get an overflow from there, that could be a complete disaster.
Do you meet zoning requirements with the parking spaces?
Yes, yes. Yeah, because the building's a little smaller, we now have extra. So, I think we can get away with like 20.
28 plus two is what it says.
Six, we have 30. So, we have extras, but they'd like to keep as many as they can for the parking issue.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, we have researched the relief required for a sign. It's 12 square feet per establishment except the planning board issues a special permit to increase it up to 24 square feet per sign that can be aggregated in a single mega sign, but the total area of the aggregated sign can't exceed 100 square feet per side.
Okay, yes.
So, if you can live within those dimensions, it looks like the planning board can do it.
Yes, I think we can live with those, yeah.
They do have a special permit for that.
It sounds like the site, it sounds like the designer
For the 24 square feet?
Yeah.
Should be good until May of next year, right?
Yeah, 2015.
Whatever you have is good.
I think he was saying if it expires, if it's changed, hasn't, but it sounds like the design is potentially changing. So, we'd have to, if the design's changing, we'd have to see it. So, the special permit was granted specific to a certain design, I believe. Do I get that right?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
We'd still need to see it come before us. You're not done tonight, unfortunately. There's quite a few issues still that are going to have to be
Too many, but we have to
Iron it down.
Iron it up.
So, we have another meeting in two weeks. Would you be ready?
I believe we would, for the items that, you know, Tom has brought up, yeah.
It's not a sign, is it?
Zoning board, yeah. We showed it being built by you, right?
I'll just give Maria a call in the morning.
The DPW?
Yes, so is enough space there?
Yes, we left, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't require any retainable?
No, no, no. I checked with the septic. And I know you wanted to extend the existing wall. We're now obliterating the existing wall, but we don't need it, so, you have room.
So, yes to the 12th?
Yeah, we'll be here on the 12th, yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion to continue?
Your turn.
So, what are the open action items? Just that we're all on the same page.
Well, I know that we still need to see a lighting plan. We'll need to see a sign design.
A revised sign design, yep.
Yep, I think we're going to want confirmation on the well location relative to the septic.
Mm-hmm.
And then if there's, you know, Tom gave his comments here, so I think there's
So, we'll go through the couple of the driveway radius issues. We'll put a little, we'll put a planning strip in the middle of that.
Yep, working on your impervious.
Yep, yep.
So, handful of
And, you know, if you do the calculation and come back with the impervious number isn't 77 and a half anymore, it's 74, every little bit helps, so.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We'll get it down as much as we can.
Yes, zoning board.
No, I understand, but the smaller the variance from what was previously approved, probably the bigger the chance that you have.
In this area right here.
So, that puts you I have to give Maria that because I need to schedule a public hearing. I'm so late.
John, could you hand your microphone, please, to this gentleman? Thank you.
Just the last point, because we talked about overflow. The planning board, that's another thing, that there'll be no extra parking on Sharon Ave for that area to confuse things, or how are you going to work that?
Well, we'll have to take a vote whether or not we want to incorporate that in. And basically, it would be a recommendation from the planning board to the Board of Selectmen. So, if that's actually going to take place, it would happen at the Board of Selectmen level. But, you know, we could take a vote when we're ready to move forward on a decision whether or not we want to incorporate that as a recommendation anyway.
Yeah. It certainly wouldn't be encouraged, I don't think, by, I'm not hearing that.
Because I know from experience, if there's parking on both sides, people coming up and people coming down from Sharon Ave, it gets really, really close.
Okay, anything else? Right, these guys want time?
Okay.
Nope, can do that right now.
Yeah, do we have time, yeah.
Well, we have a 7:45, so.
Turn the tanker truck if there's
But 7:45 is winding hollow, so it's going to go quickly. So, maybe 7:50?
I have one question, sorry. So, on the 12th, if we get a plan over to the ZBA, if they're not, so the third Wednesday of the month, if we made all the changes and there was, and the board was satisfied, could that plan be endorsing contingent upon ZBA block coverage approval?
So, we're not going to endorse at the next meeting. If anything, we would just be voting on our actual decision, closing the hearing. And actually, we just would probably be closing the hearing. We wouldn't even vote on the decision yet. So, the decision still has to be written up, drafted by our professionals. So, I think the most we could accomplish in two weeks from now is closing the hearing, hearing all the issues, make sure that we're in favor of all the changes.
I don't think the planning board should endorse a plan that's not compliant to zoning and isn't compliant unless you get the required relief.
Right, so are closing the hearing and would probably, would be subject upon certain variances that would have to be.
You could approve it, and, you know, but the zoning board, if they voted on the 20th, then, you know, you'd know whether they approved it or not before you do it.
Yeah, we could make certain things subject to the condition of approval from zoning board, yeah.
You understand that, John?
I do, I just
Don't like it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing for the modified site plan application for property located at 242 Dedham Street for August 12th at
7:50.
7:50 PM.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along quickly.
Sure, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, let's, let's
I'm Kate Posprey. I'm talking to Cody Penas.
We'll take a number outside the door.
Last we talked I don't think there's any women in ladies room.
Hey, Tom, I don't mean to be negative, but that well is on the shoulder of Sharon Ave. Sharon Ave is a 26-foot wide road, and you've got a 20-foot deep parking spot, and you've got that field there. Doesn't look like 150 is going to make it.
Yeah. I, this is the first I heard of a well being right off 1A. I don't know.
It was a really good call.
Yeah.
Is this a sign for Robin Scullers?
I'll have to look in the
About at 242 Dedham Street.
Is there any separation required between fuel storage tanks and septic or drinking? Because everybody knows if fuel storage
Fuel storage tanks and drinking water things, no.
No? Wow.
Yeah, it's on their front.
That's because DEP fell down on the job and didn't stipulate that.
Apparently, apparently. Well, a long time ago.
I don't, I am not familiar with fire protection regulations for underground tanks and that type of thing. There may be something, and they have nothing in Title V.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Well, I mean, you know, it's
The new tanks, new tanks are double walled. It's the old tanks that are the problem.
Double walled, and they're alarmed between the double walls. So, they're reasonably, you know.
Safer.
Yeah.
So, I yield well right up there.
90% of the leaks in gas stations, though, come in the piping, not in the tanks.
That's pretty amazing.
I'm not going to do it on my own. I'm not going to do it.
If you look at it, there's
Isn't there a GIS layer for where they're anticipated?
No, but there's like a mass GIS type of configuration of soils and
Oh, I haven't seen that.
They consider stressed
Stress basin, no, yeah. I think internally, there might be a high-yield well.
Right.
A DEP GIS layer on that, because I thought I'd seen it at work.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not, it's not public.
Is that a variance?
Doesn't look
Hey, Bob, like I was saying, if you do that test and that works out to be doable, we're getting the land free. I'm sure the town could get some funding and improve Holbrook Street on their own since they're getting a free well. That should be no problem. And approve it for everybody all the way down, right around the corner.
If the grades agree with it, you're right. You can do anything.
I know you can, I know you can. At least you can make the site distance a lot better. And you can even widen the road into section, too.
There are mass GIS and USGS paper publications of high-yield aquifers.
You've seen it, too.
Yeah, I mean, I used one 20 years ago when I wrote the act for zoning in Sharon.
I know, yeah, it's pretty
Was that before, after the dousing stick?
Yeah, we use those also, but the USGS has a hydrologic atlas of the Nippon Basin basin, and we use that as our, the initial basis of our act for zoning. Paper copy.
Do you have one of those dousing sticks, by the way?
Yeah, because they will do that.
Oh, I know they will.
But now, they, I think that's a little, I think it's on mass GIS, I forget. There's a Title V setbacks on there, but I'm trying to think if it has the high-yield aquifers.
I've seen them on TV, but I
But it's publicly available information.
Stick goes down. I don't know how the hell it works.
That'd be a good start, see if that's
We have, I have.
You do, okay, yeah.
He needs a dousing stick.
You're up, Bob.
Farm sidewalk funds.
Last year, I came in to you before and proposed a program of some sort, I guess, but we're replacing the cobblestones, I mean, we're replacing the brick walkways in the center of town with cobblestones. We began last year, and with the board's approval, we got funding in the amount of $38,000. The selectmen approved the Chapter 90 funds in the amount of $50,000, and we went to work. On my presentation that I have in front of you, I show the balance of that spending. And that was to only include Phase 1. We introduced this as a two-phase project. Phase 1's still ongoing, and that ends when the balance of that fund runs out, and that could be as soon as the that could be as soon as the end of next week, because as you know, we've started work on Independence. The two longest crosswalks that we have in town stretch across the two streets divided by the island. So that's going to eat up the balance of those funds pretty quickly. There'll be some left over. But also, as part of that presentation, you'll see my original estimate of, I think it's two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars from last year. So we're heading on schedule. So at the end of Phase Two, or at the end of this, this spending, there should be a need for another twenty-seven to thirty thousand dollars, I don't know what the math is. But, you know, that's just a guess at this point, because there's obstacles that we're meeting with, you know. So things are going good, and as I mentioned there, we have five out of the thirteen sidewalks done, crosswalks done. The two roundabouts still have to be done, that encompass, that includes vertical granite curbing and the replacement of the bricks, approximately twenty-six hundred square feet when you include both roundabouts. Expect to have that done this year. I haven't pulled the trigger on that. We've ordered the curb, but it's contingent upon funding. But I'm just here to assure you that, you know, the project's moving the way we thought it was. It's going according to spending schedule, and if, as mentioned last year, we could ask the board to release another thirty-eight thousand dollars to again be matched by the selectmen's vote of Chapter 90 approved funds of fifty, we'll, sure would appreciate that. One of the sheets, I'll just, I think it's important for you to know, so that when you look at the balances, there's a sheet I asked Julie to put together, a Munis report, showing the off-site balance. Just last week, there was a deposit of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from Winston Road, for the improvements on Winston Road. So that was money that wasn't there a week ago, so your balance, that I'm asking the thirty-eight thousand from, is closer to fifty, if you can figure that on, figure that out on the, on the spreadsheet work. So the twenty-six five that was put in has already been spent. That's where the town, Tom and the town administrator, Jack Hathaway, thought it best to place that money that came from Wall Street Development. Covered a lot here, I, I'm sure you might have, you must have questions, but...
Is this the available balance, one-hundred-and-nine thousand?
That's negative.
Looking at the Munis.
Yeah, this is a Munis report.
It may be.
It said percent used, but the, the actual...
It's positive, yeah.
Positive.
Well, I understood it up to the eighty-three balance, and I didn't understand the deduction of the twenty-six, or the addition of the twenty-six five.
They've only spent the sixty-five. So how does grand total?
I don't know.
Grand total is one oh nine, six eighty-nine, eighty-four.
So that was another twenty-six five added to the eighty-three to get the...
Revenue and expenses are added?
Eighty-three is on the total expense line.
I have an email here from Julie. I don't know if it contradicts the Munis spread report at all, spreadsheet report, but the beginning balance was fifty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars before we deposited the twenty-six, for a total of eighty-three.
Yep.
So if, that kind of doesn't make sense to me a little bit either, so...
That's there, no, that's there.
The Munis report is looking at from the town side. What we have in the offset account is eighty-three thousand one eighty-nine.
Right, which is, twenty-six five is already spoken for.
All right, so that makes fifty-six thousand is left.
And you want thirty-eight of the fifty-six.
Of the fifty-six.
Yeah. And when you get, assuming we prove that, and the selectmen match it, as they did last year with fifty, that gets you to about a hundred and seventy thousand of the two oh five you need, right?
Twenty-six they put into that?
Correct, so there'd be a balance of twenty-seven, thirty thousand.
Oh, and they use the twenty-six around, something like that. I don't know why it says total revenues there.
Okay. What's good about this is the, the recommendation has language that, you know, that money, of course, you understand that it wouldn't go anywhere else. It's dedicated for those crosswalks. What we don't spend goes back, obviously.
Right, sure.
Now, of the thirteen that I mentioned, I did not mention the crosswalks that are in the, the apron areas of the town hall and the library. I think there may be three or four others. They're in good shape, and we're in no rush to do, no rush to do those, but in the, in the accepted portion of the streets, the travel pass of the streets, are the thirteen that I've, that I'm identifying here. And that has nothing to do with the unaccepted portion of Stop and Shop Liberty Lane. Another subject, though.
If we didn't approve the funding, what happens with those two that you tore up today? Tore my traffic road for the whole day.
Covered in the balance.
We just...
Be illegal to do anything else.
So the thirteen, Bob, you've got, you've got the two roundabouts, so you've got four, and you have four, so there's eight right there.
Roundabouts don't figure into the thirteen, because they're not crosswalks.
No, no, but the crosswalks associated with the roundabouts, that's your, those are part of thirteen.
There are no crosswalks and roundabouts. There's only crosswalks, so there's two different issues.
I'm just saying locationally, right?
Yeah, right.
You have, at each roundabout, it's surrounded by four crosswalks, right?
The perimeter.
Two down here and four over there. There's only two on Union.
Okay, so two and...
I've actually brought a drawing, if you want to, I can plot this and show you.
Well, it might make sense to do that, just because I think we're going to want this to mesh with what's ahead of us here with Stop and Shop.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that conversation's going to be...
Definitely.
I'll produce that letter, and I think that's going to give the, that's going to
It says available budget.
Push some kind of meaning.
On his backup sheet, we've spent eighty-three, and we just got twenty-six more that he's already spent, so we've spent the whole amount.
She said, yeah, that's not right, we really only have the fifty-six. She, her own email says we have eighty-three. The one oh nine makes no sense.
Well, neither does the eighty-three really, because...
Twenty, a third of the...
It was spent, but it just, but another account.
Are we saying it was just deposited?
Add eighty-eight, one seventeen, what do you have?
I mean, what I'm thinking, and I could be wrong, is maybe the new fiscal year is another twenty-six five in terms of how they...
Are you talking about...
I don't know, she's talking about beginning fiscal...
This is the first phase.
Balance, fifty-six, six ninety.
I'm sorry, this is the second phase.
See, I interpreted it as the last fiscal year was the...
And you said the twenty-six five was spent. Is it the same twenty-six five, or is it a different twenty-six five?
He's only at about thirty-one.
The same as it was...
It's spent because...
Right now, he needs that, all that, when you do Phase Two and Phase Three.
So the rest of the improvements on Winston Road settled at twenty-six five. We took the twenty-six, took the bond, and we turned that into twenty-six five. We already paved the street just last week, so I say it's spent because the bills just haven't shown up to do it yet.
Right, so it's committed.
Oh.
It's not encumbered, but it's committed.
Okay, 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 thanks, sorry.
What's the number you need, Bob?
Less than, less than we have.
No, we, we have it, yeah.
Less than.
No, yeah, less than, yes.
What's the number we have to vote on?
Thirty-eight.
And where's the state, where's the Chapter 90 money? Is that coming? It's a different account.
That's in the form of a request that hasn't gone before the selectmen yet, although they're aware of it, and we've spoken about it, they know it's coming.
So to complete your master plan of all thirteen, you will eventually, you'll need the thirty-eight you're asking for tonight, and you'll, then you'll be going and asking for another fifty as well.
Exactly right.
Okay, makes sense.
Do you have the, the map of the thirteen?
You want to see a drawing, or a plan view?
Just to avoid confusion here, because things crosswalks are going around full circle here and now.
This is pretty cool, because although we just did it last year, GIS, I mean, Google has did, has done a flyover, so you can actually see that the call was completed.
I bet it was mass GIS. Google uses mass GIS a lot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So you have them numbered on it?
I put little X's, if you can see my tent for the ones that we've done. Like, that's done, that's done, so that's the Dailies, this is Dunkin' Donuts, so you know where we are.
But you have two more to do.
Three. These two are the ugliest ones, these two here.
Okay, those are the ones I'm not, the mid-block ones, I'm not, haven't been considering them, yeah.
Okay, so we got one, two, three, where's the other two that you've done?
He's done two here, one, two, three, four.
Three, four, okay. Five, okay, got you, all right.
So after this year, you got... Five, and then so six, seven, eight, nine, ten...
Eleven.
Eleven, twelve, there's thirteen.
Oh, you caught me. I was going to take the money and run, thirteen.
Okay.
Got it, after this year, you've got three more to do, that's...
There's just one there.
Yep.
You know, there's one there, but I didn't throw them into the mix, just, they're in good shape, and they need to be replaced, but we'll...
Yeah, they don't get the traffic, as do the other ones, too, right? Yeah. So they're holding up, because they don't get that heavy traffic, and they don't get the flowers to the same, you know.
Well, I love the cobblestones, I think they've been working great.
Yeah, they are.
You know, so they look good. Is it real stone?
It's real, granite.
It is?
Oh, yeah.
So that's smoother than I expected.
Well, we ordered them that way, it's just radio.
Yeah.
And there's, there's only so much tolerance, there were, we didn't build new crosswalks, so we salvaged.
Mike?
So what we did was, we, we took an existing condition, and when we ripped the bricks out, we found out that there's only so much tolerance, so the specifications for what the bricks are is bricks, asphalt, and then six inches of concrete. So from the top of the street, flush part of the street to the, to the concrete is only like four inches. Wouldn't take a full cobble, so we went everywhere, and I'm telling you, right to Europe, to find one that would have enough that would give us at least an inch and a half of mortar mix, bedding, to put it in.
Because you needed to have it, you needed to set it, you needed to set it.
It needs to be cased in a continuous pore of mortar, no cold joints, and it needs a full six to eight days of cure time, because once it's in, it can't take the down pressure of a truck, because it'll rock in the cradle of its mortar, and that's no good. So you've got to stay off of it for, I'd take two weeks if I could, but, you know, that's... So there's some aggravation for the motorists that, when we do this.
Is everyone set?
Everyone's questions, yes?
Yeah, the only thing, and it's, it's separate, but it's related going forward, is we've talked about it before, checking the bond expiration for the Stop and Shop project, so that we know what our negotiating position is with them, because hopefully, between what Bob is doing, he's doing a great job at it, but when he's done, hopefully, that's going to mesh nicely with what, we have proceeds available to us to complete, hopefully, the center of town.
Those proceeds can exceed by the decision. It's what we, see, this is, this could go on for two more hours.
Yeah, I don't want to do that, I just want to check the, if, Ray, would that be something that you could look into, is the bond expiration for the Stop and Shop project there? I'm sure we have it somewhere.
Are we releasing this money from the planning board account?
Yeah, it's from the, it's from the off-street.
We need to aim a sidewalk fund, right? That's what Bob is looking for, for us to, yeah.
A motion to release thirty-nine thousand...
Thirty-eight. He's only asking for, are you asking for thirty-eight?
Right, if you just read the recommendation, that's like, perfect.
Motion to release thirty-eight thousand dollars from the planning board's sidewalk account to the director of public works for the purpose of replacing brick sideways with cobblestone. Second?
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, did you want to talk to us, too, about the Winston Road?
If I didn't, you wouldn't know what was going on, I guess, but the, of course, the Friend Ridge subdivision is ongoing, and they've got enough road to build their lots, and there's three lots to be released. The last time the board met with Wall Street and myself, we agreed that we would release those lots if Wall Street were to finish the accepted portion of Winston Road to the satisfaction of the DPW. Well, what happened is, and it's just a story at this point, is that the deal, the agreement that was made with the, with our selectmen in Wall Street was, Wall Street, in lieu of paying the sixty-eight, or coming up with the sixty-eight thousand dollar bond, asked if they could work some of that money off down to what they could afford, which was twenty-five thousand dollars, and then that twenty-five thousand dollars would turn into cash to pay for the, and then everything would be done. And if, in the last meeting, we agreed that if he had, if he would do that, you'd release the lots. Well, what happened was that he, the, he didn't follow along. He did not, and I'll make no excuses for this, because it's been a real headache for the DPW, and, not the DPW, the residents on Winston Road, who we serve. And so we had to go ahead and do things, because we couldn't wait for him. His excuse would be that he didn't have the equipment or something like that. So forgetting all that, we had to do something. He went to the point of raising the structures in the street, kind of what you'd call a point of no return. So all the castings in the street were raised, the street, the sides were saw cut, and it was then left, because the, the actual repair method for that street was a specification that, that I would, you know, enforce upon ourselves. In other words, it, it needed to be done a certain way, not, not exorbitant, and it is exactly what I would expect the DPW would do. Well, he barked on that, the Wall Street did, didn't do it, so the town planner, Ray, and Jack, the town administrator, in a last-minute effort, met with him, came up with a solution that the DPW would take over that responsibility. They turned the twenty-six, the bond into that twenty-six five to pay for all that work.
And now the work, now the street was paved last week, and it's, we're just lumened seed and moving the mailboxes, doing all these, the other little finish-up work. So I guess the ending is good. Winston Road, the accepted portion of Winston Road is coming along, and by the end of tomorrow, will be complete, other than germination of seed, so...
In, in the budget? Or did you have to...
Close, but there's, we're going to need more money to finish. It's going beyond the twenty-six five, the cost to, to repair that. But like I mentioned, Ray, you know, in all fairness, the street was in a certain amount of depreciation as a...
The street was in a certain amount of depreciation, so again, I consider this to be a win, because if there was no Wall Street, eventually we'd have to go and pave that street somewhere in the next five to ten years, and now we won't have to, so that's the, that's the story with Winston Road.
So what about the three lots? What happens with the three lots?
They're released, released.
Are they released as of now?
Yes, as of today.
Okay.
The check cleared, too.
Did we wait for the check to clear before we released the lots?
Absolutely, that's why they're released today.
Well, that's good.
It was a good, good effort, we, we got what we thought was the best for the town, and...
Yep. It's unfortunate how to come to that, but it's, it sounds like it was great, you know, great implementation on your part to just get it done.
Well, it's been painful, so it's unfortunate, and I think there's some lessons learned. But, you know, we had some conversation with him a few weeks ago, with Mr. Petrosi, and he had said that he was taking care of the conservation easements and such, there's other things that are relevant for that project, and I, I lost track of that, I'm not sure where that stands, but he had at least told us that he was dealing with those.
I had a similar conversation with him last week, and he was letting me know that he's working with his attorney to get those documents into us, very soon, because he wants to get that done. Which, which leads me to another, just another thought, if I, if I can just ask, in terms of process on, on these easements and the conservation land that we do get out of these developments, why is it that we take these things at the end of the development and not at the beginning of the development? You know, this, this conservation land has part of the agreement to approve conservation development...
to approve conservation development, um, is granted to the town, but it's almost as if these get held as hostage at the very end of the development. Just wondering if there's... If there's a process that we are required to go through or that we've self-imposed that causes this to happen. Maybe we need to take a noble look at that and see if there's a way to maybe upfront these lots from the developer at the approval time, and then they can move forward, just as we release lots, you know? Let's get these conservation lots done earlier than later.
I... I think that's a highly advisable process in general, is to get the land as soon as you can. In this instance, I recall Mr. Petrosi saying that, among other things, there's a detention, a retention basin that's in the public, in the open space. And I think he was concerned that there might be restrictions on working on that land if he deeded it early in the process. So I don't know that the delay related to this project is universal. It may be specific to that one issue. But I concur with Ray a hundred percent that you should get the open spaces early in the process generally as soon as possible.
Check the big subdivision off of, um... Off of Maple, because that has conservation easements on it also. Check the date on those.
Was it Twill's End?
Twill's End.
Well, the thing that...
We've been fighting these things now for five, six months, and we're chasing them all. And I talked to Ray, and he researched a lot because it sounded odd that, at the end of a whole project, you take the land. He gets the benefit from day one. It's a long transaction, a transfer of open space. It should be done while he's building the infrastructure. Right now, you have developers that go bankrupt, that don't return calls, that run out of money, that sell. And on the last four or five open space... We're still chasing Fox Run to get access to the open space trailway that was agreed on that Howard Bailey told me the legal paperwork was given to him months ago. And now all of a sudden, they can't find it. We're chasing Fern Ridge, we're chasing Saddle Ridge. It's... It's a nightmare. And a lot of these, uh, developers, the bigger the project, the more chance to go out of business. Who do you fight at that stage? So I can't see any reason why we don't transfer this right when they're approved. And that gives you months to get the paperwork and the conservation easements all documented and recorded. And it doesn't take up any time of theirs because they're building the infrastructure anyway. And, uh, they're not working on this open space land. It's ours, so it really doesn't affect anybody. Just gets us the land before we have to get involved in the chase.
I can't think of any state or local approval prohibiting that.
There are some things that have come up. Yeah, there's some things that come up, like... At one point in time, there was even some discussion about looping with water over towards, um... Chikatabit or something. So I... I think at one point, there was some good reason, perhaps, to hold off on some of this because it was still being discussed. You know, in the case of, um, Fox Run, you had a situation with bankruptcy, and you had a new party that got involved with... Which impacted, um, I think, the access to trails and such. So there... Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't always anticipate all of these things.
Yeah, but we have a policy to do it.
As much as possible, I recognize that. But to the fullest extent possible, we should try to do it upfront. But having sat through some of those processes, I mean, the, you know, the exchange with the developer trying to work through issues and changes of ownership and disagreements, you know, sometimes you do run into a situation where it may not be prudent to go ahead and file those things when the decisions haven't fully been...
See, I disagree. I think that open space is our land. They get a significant benefit for doing it. I mean, I'm listing four subdivisions. I think it may be more like six or seven. And then there's the land that's... That's given to conservation. There's parcels all the way back to Highland Lake. We still don't have it deeded to us. We don't have deeded to us the Weber property. Everything is in turmoil, and now some of these cases come up.
You mean... You mean the manager, the Concom manager?
Yes, right.
That's the land... But Highland and Weber have been deeded to the town.
To town, not to us, though.
But they haven't been... The management hasn't been transferred from board to selectman to Concom.
Because in theory, this is giving to the conservation to manage, and it doesn't get to that stage. But right now, we've got, uh, the Saddle Ridge with issues, and we don't get calls returned. And Saddle Ridge was supposed to pay a payment on every lot sold. There's no money in the account. So all of these things, once the... The permit is given, everything falls apart, and there's no follow-up. I think Saddle Ridge may owe... How much does they owe a lot, Betsy?
I think it's two thousand a lot, so they've got four lots, right?
Yeah, so there's eight thousand dollars now that's supposed to be turned over along with the open space, and he doesn't return calls. So... So basically, once... Once it gets in process and all the things that can happen in a subdivision happen, it becomes potluck whether you're gonna get the land. So... And there's legal costs too, because now the follow-up, it's very expensive legally.
So you're saying that, um, in the case of Saddle Ridge, that those weren't exercised?
Okay, no.
Well, you've got the deed, right, that has to be filed?
No, we don't have the deed.
No, but it has to be by the owner, the developer, right? Needs to...
He has to deal us over the open space, and he hasn't.
Registry of deeds, right?
But the money was supposed to be paid as he sold the lots.
So you're saying, delay the approval on the project?
No, all I'm saying...
Until it's those...
No, it's two things. Whatever criteria you put for paying, uh, money for an open space plan, that's separate. Like, Burley paid on time his ten thousand per unit. That's fine. I'm just saying that when somebody gets a commitment to get a waiver on road construction and extra lots and frontage and all this by contributing open space, once that transacts, we should have the open space. It shouldn't be waiting until the whole process...
Early action item.
What do you mean, what's a transacts? Do you mean... I mean, there are certain points that the planning board has, you know, authority.
Once the certificate of action is recorded at the registry, and he is now able to go out and start his infrastructure, we should start the process then to transfer that open space to the town before he starts getting lots released. And then you will find that we get the open space real quick. And we won't spend all of this extra legal money chasing and chasing and chasing. And my guess is you'll never get the eight thousand dollars from, uh, Saddle Ridge. And now when they sell lots to other people, it puts a problem on them because they bought this from a developer. They're stuck in the middle, so it gets very awkward.
So you're saying, don't hold up the approval of the project or hold up lot releases if necessary? Now, so I think your point, in the case of Fern Ridge, we didn't necessarily hold up the first lot releases, and you're saying that is what we should have done as opposed to the last lot releases?
Well, no, because before, your policy was you transfer the land at the end. So in Fern Ridge, you know, everything was done, uh, open-space-wise as proper. On Fern Ridge, when I read the documents, Fern Ridge was not supposed to get a lot release until the off-site mitigation was done.
Remember the dam?
The planning board does not have any control on off-site mitigations. So once you started releasing those lots, it becomes Bob McGee's nightmare to chase and chase and nickel and dime and lose all these funds because trying to be nice and doing something in advance ended up costing the town money, from what he says, just with the road alone, extra cost, and legal and time, and just, it's a nightmare. Once somebody is obliged to do something, they should do it because once these projects go on, so many things come up in the course of a project, a two-year project or ten. You're never sure what's gonna happen, and it becomes a mess. So we have our committee, our administrator, doing follow-up calls. We had to have forty, fifty, sixty calls on Fox Ridge alone. First of all, the covenants and the conservation restriction was never given to us, which was supposed to. And Howard Bailey was working that farm unencumbered, and we had to stop Pulte from building permits until he finally got it. And then he did, like that magic. He got it to us. And now it's the thing with the access to get to the open space. We don't have that. So technically, we have no right to access the open space on, uh... On Fox Run.
I think that's a fair statement, but we also have a significant number of lots that have not been released yet.
Yeah, I got... It's not my point. My point is simply just get the land that's due us when they get the benefit, rather than waiting until the end and hope that they survive.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, and to Ray's initial question, whether or not there's a... Whether or not there's any restriction at the, you know... You know, in any legal way. I think it's just the way we write the decision.
That's what I'm guessing too, is that we just set the policy. And I just wanted to bring it up as we... Because John and I had talked about that back, and since this came up, it seemed like a good time to ask the question.
So you set the policy, have everything revolved around lot release, and you coordinate the decisions with that. And if there is a situation like Fern Ridge where they need to do some work in this open space, they could always reserve a temporary construction easement...
Exactly, yes.
For their own use.
You can tailor-make the transfer of the open space until certain things are met. That's it. But it's all... You can tailor-make this special permit, uh, any way you want. You can put any restrictions you want. It's all up between you and the developer, so...
Okay, we still have a few more items to get through, so I'm gonna...
Just one last thing before I leave. The agreement with Wall Street was to dissatisfact. Made here was that, um, he also had to pay any outstanding bills. He still owes snow plowing and sanding. So to release the lots without that payment is... Would be against the agreement.
Okay. Bob, don't forget your picture here.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you guys mind if I say goodnight?
Goodnight, Andrea.
Take care.
Goodnight, Andrea.
All right, thank you, guys.
Take care.
Okay, so daily service as-built. What do we need to do for that?
On December twelfth of two thousand eleven, we did a detailed memo indicating deficiencies in the as-built plan. On April twenty-fourth, we received an as-built plan from Norfolk Ram, and they did absolutely everything on our two thousand eleven punch list. The only item, and we discussed this earlier when we were talking about the Dunkin' Donuts site, like all gas stations, daily has this positive limiting barrier around the dispensers, which are those little grooves in the concrete pad that catch gasoline spills. Because of the grading on the daily site, part of the pad is tipped, so it would not work in the, um... In the grooves. There is no way to really grade the site and make it work, so I think we're all right with it because if there ever was a spill in that particular, uh, location, there's a... I think it's a storm scepter, but some proprietary separator structure would catch any of the water, any of the gasoline if it ever spilled in that particular location.
How many of the pumps are affected by that? Do you recall?
I didn't do the site work myself. My understanding is it is just a portion of the pad. I don't know... I mean, the pumps, the three dispenser islands, I don't know how far that extends, I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't have the as-built plan here either.
All right, that's good. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Is that something we need to vote on?
Yeah, is there any action item needed from us, or...
I think they're looking for a final, um... A final permanent certificate of occupancy, which I believe you recommend to, uh, Mr. Bullock as building commissioner. So I think the action item would be to advise Mr. Bullock, if it is true, that the planning board is satisfied with the as-built condition of the site. That the plan has been filed, and the site was built in accordance with the planning board-approved site plan, which is correct except for the positive limiting barrier issue.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second, Steve, he's a client of mine.
Can we make it with three votes?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a recommendation to the building commissioners.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstaining. Okay, thank you. And discussing a uniformed street numbering system. Anybody know what that's about?
I do. There's a, um, a proposed ordinance... Ordinance, a bylaw, sorry, uh, in your packet. This is an issue that came up, actually, on Tommy DePlacido's development, or the development next to Tommy DePlacido's, uh, where the fire department was trying to get to a location, and there was some street numbering. It questions as to where they were. What had happened was in DePlacido's development, if you start at where the clubhouse is, let's say that starts with two, they went all the way around the development and came back to the other side of the street with ninety, let's say. When you get to the very end of the development where it meets the older development, that was number fifty-six. The stub from the other development had three houses that were using that street as its access. Three, five, and four across the street. Had no correlation between the two developments. Big problem for the fire department to rescue. Minor problem for us if we catch it early on. This is just something I cobbled together from other towns' ordinances.
Doesn't this exist already?
There is nothing that we have in place.
But see, it seems that most streets in town are following this rule, more or less.
They do. But, you know, with a... With that type of development, I think there was just an oversight as to, you know, does this numbering system seem to work? And in a vacuum, it seemed to work fine, but when you look at the outer world, it didn't work at all.
For that particular development, it didn't work at all.
No, and, you know, today, when you drive into that development, you'll see that on the left, your numbers start sequentially and move up.
Yeah.
On the right, they start at a very high number and move down.
I guess another question might be somewhere like Fox Run, where you have two towns in the development, you know, crosses town lines, and what is it doing with the numbers? Are they sequential or... Does the street name change or...
So my question to the planning board is, I've written it up as a bylaw amendment. And there's some benefits to doing it that way, but it also could be written up as a policy. policy. And, you know, as a bylaw, it's got some teeth, obviously, and it's got some strength. But, you know, there's that limitation of if you do want to change anything in here, you have to go to town meeting to make those changes. As a policy, it doesn't have as much strength, but it does have that flexibility if you see that there's something in here that you don't necessarily like or you'd like to amend and do it differently. So I just put it on the agenda tonight, just as a discussion item. We can put it on an agenda later. It's a future date if you'd like, and get some time to think about it or even just to do your own research to see what you think works.
Well, I think it's a great idea. Seems like it should be a no-brainer. Guess, you know, whether it's a policy or a bylaw, I don't know, I'm open to other people's opinion. I think there's pros and cons for each particular method that you use to deliver it, but it seems like such a no-brainer that, I don't know.
I don't think it's just a policy or regulation, then you don't have to go to town meeting and you can change it easier.
Yeah, and it's not a threat to somebody else changing it if they, as we've just experienced.
So in the case of Village Rivers Edge, we should have had the foresight to, you know, you have the existing homes that had certain number scheme, we should have worked from those homes down to 115 as opposed to starting at 115 and working up? Is that, just have you thought it through?
I think so. I think it was just, it just escaped everybody and it didn't really, didn't really just get picked up. And then I think what happened was when Tom numbered his units for that development, he just went through and numbered it. There wasn't a lot of thought as to how is this going to work with E-911 and, you know, a rescue coming.
Sure.
So this policy just would make it so that now we've got something to work from and it's on the radar screen, I guess is the best way to put it. Just becomes part of our regular process.
It might be interesting too, in the policy, to say something about, you know, a process where the review of the numbering system is a process defined, and perhaps the fire department and/or police department get involved and have to be part of that process, just so it doesn't slip through the cracks. I know that often in the building design industry, we label floor plans and rooms on floor plans just to accommodate the plan design, but then when the building opens, the room numbering system and signage on doors is often quite different from what might be on a floor plan. So I think for like Tom's purpose, he could label it whatever he wants, but then it's sort of that, you know, when it become, maybe it's sort of a process to turn it from, into an as-built, I guess, versus what was just sort of a diagrammatic drawing.
You can have public safety sign off on all of those parts, which is perfect because that's who really it matters to.
Yeah, I think I have some language in there talking about some of that, but I'll double-check and make sure that there's something in there and then...
Because the biggest thing is, you know, much like we're talking about even the conservation land and everything, is a process to ensure it's not slipping through some cracks, right? And that we're paying attention to it when we should pay attention to it.
That is important, especially with emergency calling.
Absolutely. Especially if you're the one who's having the emergency, right?
Also, yeah. It is serious. Thank you.
Well, I could go with a policy as opposed to a bylaw.
I think I would agree.
Thank you.
Anything else on the other items here?
I reviewed the minutes and they look fine, so once I find them. Motion to approve the minutes of the planning board from July 8th, 2014.
Anybody need a minute to review those or somebody want to second that?
I read them earlier, so I second.
Jeff, do you need a minute?
No, it was pretty straightforward.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Betsy, is that something that needs some attention?
That would be me. There's a couple of quick things I just wanted to bring up. I had a request from Mr. Greaves who lives on Turner Street, owns property on Turner Street, which comes out to Massachusetts.
Mass Ave, yeah.
Massachusetts Avenue, this is part of Christina Estates. Some of you may recall what happened on that, some of you may not, but from what I understand, Turner Street does not come all the way through to Massachusetts Avenue. There's a point where it ends. Mr. Greaves' parents apparently lived to the west of Turner Street and had requested the road not go all the way through. At this point, his parents have both passed away and he is interested in having that road come through now. It was constructed, it seems to be less than what our subdivision standard is, but there is some sort of paving there and there's, I guess, a couple of gates, one on each end to keep people from coming through. You know, I don't know enough about what had happened at that point in time. I'm hearing stories in two different directions, one that some folks would rather die than let traffic come through there and other folks are perfectly all right with it. But I wanted to just bring it up to the planning board, maybe we can put this on the agenda for a discussion at the next meeting, than get into too much tonight. More is fair warning more than anything else, just to...
Not knowing the configuration, but it has the very significant potential of allowing people by right to develop lots along that street if you open it to public use, becomes a public way. So if it's got a 12-foot pavement and it's public way, people can get lots on it and then they can turn around to the town and say, please fix the street in front of my house.
It's too bad we didn't bring it up when Bob was here, we should have him look at the condition.
I did brief him on it and he was one of the folks that said, no, I don't think the townspeople want to have that road open.
Matter of fact, there was a petition.
Isn't it for emergency access only or something?
To do what?
To keep it as emergency access only.
I seem to remember that.
That was actually approached by Mr. Greaves to buy those.
Lots of...
Tom's, yes, so Tom's...
How long a stretch of road is it, John?
I didn't look into it. I think there's a few lots there though.
So we'd have to look at the original decision and the site plan, I think, to understand where we left it because I wasn't here when we approved this.
Before my time, I don't know.
It is absolutely correct that there definitely are, there's definitely folks that are opposed to this. And my recollection is those folks live in Christina Estates and they may live right in that area where that, there's a gate there now, basically. It's my recollection, there's a gate.
Over and above that, the rest of Turner Street is probably not the kind of a street that you want to encourage a lot of through traffic on. It's pretty marginal.
It just got connected now to Winston though, through Fern Ridge.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to increase the traffic on it that much. Maybe a couple of lots out of Fern Ridge.
People out of Fern Ridge would go down Turner rather than go down Winston if they go into center of town.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, we ought to look at a map anyways and take a look at this.
Why don't I get some more material from you and then we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Did you speak with Jack about this?
Yes, I did.
So, you know, I'm sure he recalls.
He does, he recalls similar stories.
Correspondence, I think, from those in the other camp, going back a few years.
Yeah. I think there might be camps by the time we get done with this.
Jeez.
Maybe they'll be reestablished. The second one was Bella Rosa Stables, which is part of that Toils End, my favorite name for a subdivision. Although the toiling has not ended for the owner of Bella Rosa Stables, he's got many horses. There's a plan that he dropped off to me actually today. Share that with you if you just want to pass that down, open it up. There was an entrance to his barn, what was it, foolish? The entrance was at the top right corner of the subdivision, and that was to be constructed. I guess he's supposed to also bring utilities into his property through that accessway. He is proposing to use this sort of meandering path. He highlighted on this one in yellow, I wish I'd given you that one, and to come out rather than on Farrington, but to come out on Hemmingway Place. He would like to know what the process would be in order to do this. As you know, I'm a little bit new to this, so learning about how the approvals work here and whether this is a minor or a major change to what was approved. I will leave that up to you.
And I know you're new to the scene. I guess the question I would have, and you probably can't answer it because, you know, you're new to the scene, is why now is he looking for something different? Because, you know, we vetted this and it's been a long, difficult process. And one of the easements that John is referring to, you know, it's along what was going to be his driveway.
Actually, orange on this plan.
This orange one here is the easement into the open space.
So this is what was opposed and this is what was going to be his access to his barn, and this would have been the access to the trails.
Correct.
So now he's looking to do...
He's fine, he's going to have his utilities come through this access here where our access would be to the open space. There would be a gravel path there, nothing would change in that respect. He just would not use that as his driveway. He would rather use this as his driveway, as a gravel path that he would create around this area.
He's just looking to move his driveway?
He's looking to move the driveway.
The new area off of an accepted road?
It's off of Hemmingway Place, so that would be an accepted road.
So that's just a curb cut, isn't it?
It would be a curb cut as part of this development, but, you know, is it a major or minor variation from what was approved?
Does it have anything to do with this development? He doesn't own that.
No, this isn't...
Is it the curb cut for a resident?
Yeah. My guess would be because the extent of this, that the fire department should be consulted and maybe the building commissioner.
Is it such a huge driveway?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's quite a distance. It's quite a bit longer to get to this building in case of emergency as opposed to the original route. And this was paved and this is not. So I'm thinking that either the building commissioner or more likely the fire department, they're probably all right with it.
But he's still going to have this as a paved, right?
I don't think so.
No, he's not proposing to do that. He wants to just run the utilities there and then just leave it as a gravel.
I think he's going to give us the path.
I see, but not the driveway. I see.
He was saying that it would be better for the neighbors. I'm not so sure.
You should just apply for curb cut with the DPW and let them run it through the public safety to make sure it works for them.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the curb cut for the driveway, the driveway permit, there's a driveway permit process, was to be this, and that may already have been issued. I would assume it has, but I'm not sure, I haven't spoken to Bob about that. But that has been the plan. I guess my concern is that, you know, this has been a very difficult process, you know, there's trails that, you know, we've walked as a board to try to bring this project to finality. And I just think before we potentially open up another set of issues where you've got some folks that have very spirited opinions, that, you know, through the public hearing process that we've heard from these folks, I just think we need to be very careful. I'm not directing that comment at you, I'm just saying in general for the board.
What about the fact that he's putting a driveway in a 100-foot wetland buffer?
That's an issue.
I mean, he's in the buffer here, he's in the buffer here. All that is disturbance to 100-foot buffer that he didn't have before. It's significant. And then quite a bit's within the 200-foot. I don't know if it's the same kind of buffer, but certainly he's got quite a bit in the 100-foot, all in here, all in here. So it feels like a backdoor approach to significant issues.
In conceptually, it's a commercial...
Wetland edge.
I mean, sure looks like it, I mean, look at that driveway, huh?
Is that stable of commercial use? Probably is.
It's a farm.
Yes.
Isn't it classified a farm?
There's some protections because it's equestrian.
If it's a farm, he can do what he wants through the buffers on it. You can't say anything.
Except for the fact that it's not part of our approved site plan, so to go and ask for it now where we didn't approve it.
Yeah, I think that how it works is he's a private resident looking for a curb cut from the town.
And then he could do what he wants after that, yeah.
Michelle, it shows on this one that he stays outside the 50-foot.
50, I see that.
I think the potential is...
We had the problem with the pig farm, Walter, and they decided to put a fence through the wetlands and you can say nothing.
And what if this isn't just used as a driveway? What if all of a sudden now we've got other activity taking place on this large, you know, stretch of track in now close proximity?
What's the Olympic thing where they skate around, the fast pace?
Yeah.
Speed skating.
It's like a speed skating thing.
Unless there's a very, very good reason, I would not be in favor of opening this up.
And maybe we recommend, like you're saying, that he goes to the...
Yeah, why don't I speak with public safety as well as building commissioner?
Not that we're going to push it onto somebody else's problem, but...
I think you'll find that that's classified by the status of farm and he can pretty much do what he wants.
Okay. Thank you. Last thing was Toils End Farm again, the water booster station. The green bollards are up.
Yeah, we saw them.
And they are green. They are painted green. You can see the paint on the grass, the grass also is green.
It's not the vinyl, huh?
No, no.
That's too bad.
And there's a nice stripe painted along the top to make it look kind of like the...
The vinyl?
The plaster vinyl.
But it's not.
Is there with the cattle?
No.
The building's a pretty ugly color too.
Yeah. So it is green, it's not yellow anymore.
Just painted. Send the kids out at midnight with the shaker cans. Go have some fun, kids. Oh, use the green though.
What's the planning board going to do considering that the, I know Steve has mentioned over the past, the Fox Run signs and walls are all on the town right away, their entrance.
Yeah, that's been brought to their attention, right?
Which isn't allowed.
That was brought to their attention.
And normally, well, I know if they told me, moves them off that right away.
What his response was?
That would be up to Bob, wouldn't it? Bob Bullock to go out and make that announcement?
I don't think so.
It'd be nice to give it to him, wouldn't it?
The planning board has jurisdiction over the rights away till they're accepted as public ways.
Steve had mentioned this to him, I think, a few times, but it just gets...
How do you enforce it though? I mean, should we go out and arrest him?
No, no.
Do they have planning board handcuffs or something?
You stop issuing building...
Yeah, withhold lot releases.
Yeah.
So next time they come forward and ask for lot releases, we'll have to remember that.
Hold assuredly and remove the unauthorized approvals. Or just ask him to do it.
But we have asked him, so I think you're right, the next time he's here for lot releases, it's got to be on our, it's got to be on our minds. Any other new business, any other discussion? One's going twice, do we have a motion to close?
Just misplaced it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.